Good evening, we're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting is in properly notice and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2. Please note customers of CenturyLink and Cox Communications can view this program in high definition on Channel 1002. You can also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire TV on the Go Vegas app. The Planning Commission meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV and the web the Saturday of the meeting at 10:00 AM, Monday at midnight, and the following Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
(inaudible)
Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Chair Cherry.
President.
Vice Chair DeSalvio.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Schlotman.
Present.
Commissioner Toussaint.
Present.
Commissioner Rousch. Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions in the appeal and review process if appropriate. There are agendas on both sides of the podium if anyone from the public would like to come up and grab one. Please read these carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. On the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we have a smooth meeting. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to the matters of the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of any time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Seeing no one, we will move on to item number five. For possible action to approve the final minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of November 27, 2018, and December 11, 2018. Vice Chair DeSalvio?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the minutes from November 27, 2018. Is that the ones?
I think we can take, can we take them both at the same time? We can take them both.
As well as December 11, 2018?
Thank you. If there's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote.
Excuse me, Chair Cherry, what if I was at one but not the other?
If you could just note the one that you were absent from.
Oh, thank you.
And Commissioner Quinn, you can still vote on the one you weren't here, you just can't make the motion.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Did that post? I don't, I'm not sure.
Did she wish to abstain?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So you can vote, it's just if we know which meeting that you were absent from on the record.
The last one.
The last one, the December, let me get the date right here. December 11th.
Yeah, the one before I was there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That motion carries. Okay, moving on to the housekeeping items. Are there any items commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Commissioner, Chairman Cherry, I'm sorry. I'd like to pull forward items number 32 and number 33.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two and 33, thank you.
For housekeeping, okay.
No, I'd like them to be heard.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's noted. Is the, okay, I have a few different people here, I'll let you, whoever would like to go first, I need your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nathan Taylor, 8414 West Farm Road. I'd like to request that item number 26 be withdrawn without prejudice. I'd also like to request that item number 57 be withdrawn without prejudice.
Twenty-six, what was the second?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get your name and address?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, Dave Turner with Baughman and Turner Engineering, representing the applicant on items 20 through, 22 through 25. We would ask at this time that items 22 and 23 be tabled, and that items 24 and 25 be withdrawn without prejudice. After neighborhood meetings and discussions with Councilwoman Tarkanian's office, we decided to relook the project and come back with a new project that's acceptable to the neighborhood and the commission.
Okay, that's noted, thank you.
Dennis Russ, 522 East Twin. We respectfully request that items 16 and 17 be withdrawn without prejudice.
Were they 15?
Fifteen and seventeen.
Sixteen and seventeen. Just sixteen and seventeen. Mr. Gronauer?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want a clarification. I'm here representing related development on item 32 and 33. We did have a letter submitted, want to withdraw one without prejudice and to table.
Oh, this is-
I know Commissioner Rousch, I don't know if you wanted to hear it in normal due course, but we, I don't know how to proceed outside of the authority that I have from my client, that's what I thought we were going to be proposing.
I just want to have the item heard, I want to talk about the item, and I want to address staff's concern about the item, because I know that the item has a rich history of being approved at a nice density, I don't have a real problem with it at all, I just wanted, I wanted the item to be heard.
Okay, and Commissioner Rousch, I'm sorry, I didn't have the numbers exactly when you said that, because I think I'd mentioned to you that the applicant wanted to bring these forward. What I heard is they wanted to have them during housekeeping withdrawn, which I'm inclined during this portion to understand what the applicant wants on the record, because that, when we had talked earlier, that's what I thought we were going with this.
Yeah, let me explain something fairly quickly, and I think I could go either way here if, I just need to understand what needs to be in the record. But from our side is, we started this process with the intent of believing we're going to do a minor amendment, because the application has already been approved before for multifamily, multifamily's on there. It was determined by staff that we had to come in with a major amendment. We submitted that major amendment, we went through, and at the 11th hour, we had a threatening email that put us under duress, that stated we had to file a major modification to the Kohli master plan. Did not agree with it, but in order to move forward, because related has substantial amount of money with the Tivoli development in place, we did not want to breach that contract, so unfortunately, we had to go ahead and submit the major modification. We submitted then a protest letter. We do not want to move forward with that major modification. We tried to work that out with staff to say, can we table the major amendment, sit with city attorney's office, city staff, to work out that issue. Instead of having a long discussion here, I cannot withdraw both items, that's what staff wants, I cannot table both items. It's set up the way it's set up, because we have private parties involved, and I've explained that to your staff, and I needed to at least put that much on the record. So I'm, I think I'm okay if I see to move to wait till 32, 33 to continue to have that discussion, and at that hearing portion, we determine to withdraw and, withdraw and table as I'm requesting, and so be it, out of respect for Commissioner Rousch, I'll do that.
Excuse me, through you, Chairman Cherry, I agree with Commissioner Rousch on this, because I have questions. That's a beautiful project that I hate seeing just kicked to the curb, and then, so I do have questions, and I'd like to discuss it as well.
And that's right, and just, Mr. Gronauer, the intent isn't to kick the project to the curb, right? It's still to do it.
No, I, the intent is not to kick it to the curb, we'd like to have the opportunity to sit down with staff, and the only way to appease all parties who are involved is, the easiest way is to withdraw the major modification, table the, table the major amendment, and in doing so, which is item 33, if it's determined after sitting with staff to file a major modification, this firm and myself will not refile that application, it will be somebody else to come in if that's determined that way. If it's not, the development might go away, also. There's a strong likelihood, because of the actions on behalf of the city, that this development might go away, and that's why it's a very delicate situation, I'm not comfortable standing here. I was hoping that we could at least have resolved it with your staff, but unfortunately, I'm in a position to stand here and make my case, and put things on the record to protect my client, and to let everybody know that if we do something different tonight, it may expose everybody up to, expose everybody to additional liability, and I don't want to do that. And I, but out of due respect with Commissioner Rousch, I think I understand what she wants, she just wants to put some things on the record and have that discussion. I'm more than willing to have that discussion, and then we can make the vote on what's going to be tabled, what's going to be withdrawn without prejudice, and so on. I'm fine with that.
So you're the applicant, you're saying-
I am the applicant, my client is here, and actually, the property owner of Tivoli is here also, and all due respect, I'll give the deference to Commissioner Rousch, and then we'll go from there, and then see how we're going to handle those applications. I'm comfortable at that point, I think that's where you want to go. Okay.
Okay, great, I'm hearing, or seeing nods, and, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Did we?
Through you.
Yep.
Some other housekeeping items that we have, number 19, the applicant is requesting an abeyance for 19 to the February 26 Planning Commission meeting. It's the third request for the meeting, and they've stated that it's to allow time to meet with, with the city regarding the scope of the work for the project. We also have requests for abeyance by the applicants for the following items to the February 12 Planning Commission meeting. Those items are 27 through 31, 44 through 46, and 51 through 52. And that's the first request for these items, and then I will defer on item 32 and 33 at
Okay, so I think we are ready for a motion then.
Number 19 needs to have a finding in order to take an abeyance action.
Okay, and so before the motion, noting on number 19, that the, this is the applicant's third request, and in reference to their letter, they're working with staff into the councilwoman's office to discuss some design ideas, so we will let that sit on the housekeeping for the abeyance request. I believe I can go for a motion now. On the housekeeping items.
I need to read them in, I believe, Commissioner. Sixteen and seventeen, is that the timeframe?
That's correct, on, there was a request for items 16 and 17. Commissioner Quinn, you had comments?
Thank you, I apologize for being late behind the gun, I was listening to Mr. Gronauer on 32 and 33, but I want to, if it's okay, is, could I call the applicant forward on item 16 and 17 at this time?
Please.
Is the applicant here for item 16 and 17, 4221 West Charleston Boulevard?
I believe that's a gentleman coming up right now.
Dennis Russ, representing the applicant. The applicant is in Hawaii right now.
Well Dennis, we know what he's not doing, and that's cleaning up his property.
Now, I believe that I've withdrawn the application without prejudice.
So there's, you requested it, so there are some comments-
That's what we're requesting, withdrawn without prejudice.
The Commissioner wants to make some comments about the items.
Well, she can make the comments, I've done what I've needed to do, thank you.
Okay, well, I'm going to put a condition on the hold, that this property is cleaned up in 60 days.
Why so long?
Thirty days.
I don't know.
I mean, the councilman gave this applicant one year.
Well, why so, why, why 60 days?
Thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah, so my, I'd like to add a condition to item number, I guess, item number 17. So my motion is, is fine on 16, but on number 17, I am, I'd like to add a condition to item number 17.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I'm not, we're agendized just to hear the items as they've come before us, and they've asked to withdraw without prejudice, I'm not sure that we can put a condition on it, I think you could direct staff to, if there's a code enforcement issue-
Okay.
-to address it through the code enforcement process, I'm not sure that we could do that through this item today.
Thank you, then, the most I can do then is to ask Ms. Mary to send your people out there, because Mary, this was taken yesterday, and the fireman told me, could you please say what you told me today?
Mr. Commissioner, through you. Basically, we sent an inspector over there to inspect the property. They found that some of the items had been moved, and that the owner of the property had secured a storage facility in the county, so they were in the process of moving some of that storage that you saw yesterday today.
Okay, so 30 days is adequate, but anyway, and then Ms. Mary could send her people out there, if that's okay.
Commissioner Quinn, yes, we will go ahead, and we will notify code enforcement, we'll give them 30 days.
It's simply dangerous at this point, thank you very much, Mary.
Chairman Cherry, through you, and Commissioner Quinn, would it be appropriate that this is withdrawn with prejudice under these circumstances?
You certainly have the authority to do that, if it's withdrawn with prejudice, I believe it's a year before they can bring the application back.
Well, they're going to the county still, right?
Would you like it to be with prejudice or without prejudice, Commissioner?
I would, I mean, I would recommend it be with prejudice, given the attitude that we've just witnessed and the condition of the property, I think they wait for another year to come back and clean up their act. That would be my-
This is certainly not what my boss, Mayor Temp, represents, and this is certainly not what I want to see, so I am going to agree with my friend, Commissioner Rousch, and say that this is being withdrawn with complete prejudice, in my opinion.
And it doesn't, I don't think it just started today, it's gone over a year now with this application.
I've never seen an abeyance for one year in my entire life, I've worked 11 years up here.
And nothing got done.
Nothing, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner DeSalvio? I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On item 16, VAR 71768, withdraw without prejudice. Item 17-
With prejudice.
With prejudice.
I thought 17 was with prejudice, and 16 was without prejudice. Or you want both with prejudice? That's fine. Okay, I take that back. Item 16, VAR 716, 71768, with prejudice. Item 17, SDR 71769, with prejudice. Item number 17, SUP 73920, moved to the February 26 for its third abeyance. Item 22, tabled, GPA 74312. Item 23, tabled, ZON 74313. Item 24, without prejudice, VAR 74314. Item 25, without prejudice, VAR 74315, and 74314, excuse me. On item 26, withdraw without prejudice, SUP 75017. Item 27, abeyance, GPA 75109. Item 28 with abeyance, ZON 75110. Item 29 with abeyance, VAR 75111. Item 30 with abeyance, SUP 75112. Item 31 with abeyance, SDR 75114. We are going to hear 32 and 33. Abeyance on 44, VAR 75123. Abeyance on 45, SUP 75124. Abeyance on 46, SDR 75125. Abeyance on 51, SUP 75084. Abeyance on 52, SDR 75082. And item 57, SUP 75017, without, withdraw without prejudice.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, if you could go back through and just make sure you have those abeyance dates, each of those abeyances has a date that they're being obeyed to, and I apologize, I should have caught you when we were talking through there.
Okay, so on, on items 27 through 31, they're going to be in abeyance to February 12, 2019, and then items 44 through 46, same February 12, 2019. Item 51 and 52, February 12, 2019. And I believe on item 19, that was an abeyance, and that would be till February 26. With that, I make a motion to approve the housekeeping item.
Thank you, there's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Excellent. I have some long, yeah, that motion carries.
Your first time?
Okay, moving on to the one motion, one vote part of the agenda. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote, they are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission, not agreeing with the condition and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff, should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item number 7, ZON 7515, applicant Sylvia Esparza, law, owner Downtown Sanchez LLC. For possible action, request for rezoning from R1 to PO at 728 Garcia Avenue, Ward 3, staff recommends approval. Related item 8, SDR 7517, for possible action, request for site development plan review for proposed two-story, 6,500 square foot office building with waivers of Title 1908 Development Standards and Title 1912 Parking Standards, Ward 3, staff recommends approval. Item number 9, applicant owner CMK 2300 Charleston LLC, for possible action, request for rezoning from CD to C1 at 2316 West Charleston, Ward 1, staff recommends approval. Item number 10, SUP 75063, applicant Legacy Wellness LLC, owner KRG Las Vegas Centennial Center LLC, for possible action, request for a special use permit for proposed 2,000, 2,320 square foot massage establishment with waivers to allow zero distance separation from a similar use where 1,000 feet is required, and zero foot distance separation from residential property where 400 feet is required, at 7901 West Tropical Parkway, Suite 110, Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Item number 11, SUP 75094, applicant owner WMCV Phase 1 SPE LLC, for possible action, request for a special use permit for proposed 5,154 square foot restaurant with alcohol use at 495 South Grand Central Parkway, Suite 116, staff recommends approval. Item number 12, SUP 75104, applicant owner Sri Ganeshia Inc., for possible action, request for a special use permit for proposed 6,662 square foot nightclub use with waivers to allow a 313-foot distance separation from a church house of worship, and a 1,041-foot distance separation from a school where 1,500 feet is required, on .80 acres at 700 Fremont Street, Suite A, Ward 3, staff recommends approval. Item number seven, or 13, ROC 74999, applicant the Colita Group, owner Sequoia USA LLC et al., for possible action, request for a review of condition of approved site development plan review to amend condition 13, which states dedicate exclusive right turn lane bus for the entry on Buffalo per standard drawing number 234.4, and grant a bus shelter pad easement to the Regional Transportation Commission prior to issuance of permits for this site. Construct the required bus turnout concurrent on-site development activities at the northeast corner of Trinity Park Avenue and Buffalo Drive, staff recommends approval. Item number 14, VAC 74914, applicant owner Integral Partners Park Place Center, Las Vegas LLC, for possible action, request for petition to vacate an existing 20-foot wide public sewer easement located on the southwest corner of Sirius Avenue and Rancho Drive, Ward 1, staff recommends approval. Item number 15, VAC 75087, applicant Dr. Horton, owner Summer Parkway and Simran LLC, for possible action, request for petition to vacate a 20-foot wide public sewer easement and a 30-foot wide government patent easement generally located 650 feet south of the intersection of West Coast Drive and Rock Moth Street, Ward 2, staff recommends approval. No? Okay, this is noticed as a public hearing, anyone from the public would like to be heard. Can I get your name and address for the record?
Good evening, I'm Carly Mossman, Principal of Cora Architecture, representing Sylvia Esparza for the application.
Wouldn't this is a one motion, one vote?
Yes.
So you're, so you're up here, we're, these were all written to the record, and we're going to have a motion for-
Okay.
...approval?
I didn't know if you had any questions or anything.
No, well, thank you for being here, though.
Thanks.
Do appreciate that. I've been under the weather, so I'm just coming back to life, I apologize. Yeah, no, I'm losing it tight. I'll pass it on to our vice chair for a motion on the one motion, one vote.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would intend-
Commissioner Schlotman, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just want to make a note on item 7, ZON 75115. I've had many conversations with Sylvia Esparza in the past, and about constructing the actual building, so I don't think it'd be appropriate for me to be, to vote on this matter.
Okay.
So I'll be abstaining on number 7. And number 11, I, excuse me, that would be on 7 and 8, and then on item 11, I construct the majority of the food and beverage for this particular operator that'll be going into the space, so I'll go ahead and be abstaining on number 11 as well.
Thank you, Commissioner, for noting that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for- I make a motion for approval on items 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 of the one motion and one vote.
Thank you, there's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 7 through 9 will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on February 6. Items 10 through 15, items 10 through 15 are final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to the public hearing portion, I am bringing forward items 43, 47 through 50, related items 47 through 50. Item number 47, VAR 75167, applicant City of Las Vegas, owner City of Las Vegas et al., for possible action, request for variance to allow deviations from Title 19.10.020, CV Development Standards at the southwest corner of Foremaster Lane and Las Vegas Boulevard, Ward 5, staff recommends approval. Related number, item number 48, VAR 75168, for possible action, request for variance to allow 31 parking spaces where 36 are required, Ward 5, staff recommends approval. Related item 49, SUP 75166, for possible action, request for special use permit for rescue mission or shelter for the homeless use, Ward 5, staff recommends approval. Related item number 50, SDR, SDR 75169, for possible action, request for site development plan review for proposed 26,582 square foot rescue mission shelter for the homeless with a waiver, with a waiver to allow no perimeter landscaping, Ward 5, staff recommends approval. Can I get the staff report, please?
Actually have that.
Oh, they're going to present, can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Sam Tolman, 333 North Rancho, representing the City of Las Vegas, Capital Project Management. We have reviewed staff's recommendations and concur, and I will turn the time over to our architect, LG Associates, to introduce the project.
Thank you.
We can make a quick presentation, or answer questions, or both.
Commissioner Williams?
Sir, back to you.
Pardon? You'd like to, okay, I think the commission's ready to discuss it, we've had a lot of research, and if there's questions, we can go with it. If I could first, before we go there, just disclose that I have worked with the firm LGA, don't have anything outstanding with them, so I will be able to vote on the item that is here.
Thank you, Chairman.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I do need to open the public hearing on this item quickly.
Okay, sorry.
This was noticed as a public hearing, anyone from the public would like to be heard. Seeing no one, I will close it, and I will go to the Commissioner.
Thank you, Chairman Cherry. I have reviewed this, and I do believe that this is a great addition to the city, and I support the corridor of hope, so I move to approve items 47, 48, 49, and 50.
Would you have to take them individually? Yeah, Commissioner, we'll have to take them individually.
I'm sorry.
We'll have to take them individually, the applications.
Okay, all right. I move to approve item number 47, VAR 57167.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Okay, I move to approve item 48, VAR 575168.
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. The motion carries.
I move to approve item 49, SUP 75166.
That motion carries.
I move to approve item 50, SDR 75169.
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion carries, and I will say, gentlemen, I'm sure we've looked at the backup, it's a great project that's been brought forward, and this will go to City Council, so you'll have an opportunity to give a really nice presentation to the city, and I know the City Council will really appreciate what comes their way.
And, Mr. Chairman, to that point, this item will move forward to the City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on February 6. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there was a request on, where we were in the housekeeping section, on items 30, 32 and 33, yeah, we'll hear those now. and 33, yeah, we'll hear those now. Item number 32, MOD 75206, applicant RD Investments LLC, owner Great Rush Park LLC, for possible action or request for major modification of the Picoli Ranch master plan to change the land use designation from golf course, golf course, open space drainage, commercial center and neighborhood commercial office to mixed-use village center at the northeast corner of Alta Drive and Rampart Boulevard, Ward Two, Soroka, staff recommends approval. And related item number 33, SDR 74852, for possible action or request for a major amendment of a previously approved site development plan review for proposed six-story, 340-unit multifamily residential building where a 10-story, 300-unit multifamily residential building was previously approved, Ward Two, staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting an amendment to an approved site development plan review for the multifamily residential component of a mixed-use development on a portion of a 28.43 acre property. The original approval was for 340 residential units and three buildings with a maximum 10-story, 110-foot building height. A subsequent amendment reduced the number of units to 300 units within a single building. The current amendment request is to reduce the single building height to six stories and 79 feet and to restore the number of units to 340. The applicant also requests a major modification of the Picoli Ranch master plan to change the land use designations pursuant to the Picoli Ranch Phase Two Plan on the entire 28.43 acre parcel to allow for mixed commercial and residential uses. This major modification would not change intensity or density of current uses on the parcel and would have no effect on already approved developments on the subject parcel or other parcels located within the Picoli Ranch planned area. Staff recommends approval of both the major modification and the site development plan review amendment. Please note that these items are related. As such, if a motion is made to table, withdraw either item, staff recommends the same motion applied to both items. Also note that there are additional letters of protest since publication. Thank you.
Can I get your name and address for the record, I have a question for you, too. Start.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing related development, the applicant on item 32 and 33. I'll answer your question first.
This is related with Mr. George Perez involved in Florida itself capacity?
Yes.
I will disclose that Mr. Perez and I, Mr. Perez and I had a business or involved in a company over a decade ago. We're not involved currently, haven't had contact, don't do anything in over a decade, but just so it's on the record and clear.
Okay. What I'd like to do is just, again, for about a quick 30 seconds to one minute, just give a quick, brief presentation, so to speak, and then I'd like to turn over to Commissioner Roush. As I mentioned in my initial comments, our, our plan tonight was to request that the major modification, item 32, to be withdrawn without prejudice. No matter what happens, I need to make sure that happens tonight. Item 33, we were requesting the item to be tabled. I believe Commissioner Roush has some other comments she may want to make with that application. But with that being said, I'll turn it over in deference to Commissioner Roush, and then I'd like at least some time to make sure my intention is known, because I know there are parties who are definitely interested to make sure the right thing gets done on my part, and I don't have presentation material before you tonight because the intent was to withdraw one and to table the other.
Okay. Quick, I did, this is notice as a public hearing, anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn over to the commission, Commissioner Roush.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I think I should start by saying that I feel that it is totally and wholly inappropriate for these two items to be tied together. I think that the city may have an agenda here that is a little bit misplaced and maybe overreaching. I think that item number 32, a major modification, is not required, especially given the history and the precedent that's been set on this property for over a decade. I've lived in this neighborhood for 20 years, I walked to Tivoli, I know the property well. It suffered dramatically during the downturn, as well as from the fact that there's just simply not enough density or households to help support it. A project like this would really help turn Tivoli around. The neighborhood has been expecting something on this site for quite some time, and it would be nice to see this come to fruition. As long ago as 2006, an SDR was approved by this board and by the council for a 10-story, 340-unit project. This project that's proposed today is a six-story project, it's a much less impactful project to the neighbors. My understanding is that the neighborhood meeting was held last week, and it was very positive in terms of the feedback that was received from the neighbors. I had a lot of neighbors contact me and say that they were very much in favor of this project and the revisions that were set forth. So that makes me think that there is definitely something amiss here. In 1993, 16 units per acre were assigned to this site. This goes way back, in 1998, you added a 40,000 square foot, 576-room resort gaming hotel on this site. I would say that this is a far cry from all of those other previous actions and very harmonious and compatible with the neighborhood. I understand the legal ramifications that the legal department is trying to protect us from, however, I disagree with them. I think that Judge Crockett's ruling on Queens Ridge has nothing to do with this site. This site does not require a major modification, given its history and given the prior approvals that were given. So with that, I would like to make a motion that item number 32 for a major modification be stricken and removed, and that we don't have to move forward with the major modification, because I would like to have item number 33 heard so that we can approve it tonight. How do I go about doing that correctly?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, unfortunately, while I agree with the Commissioner in large part, as evidenced by staff's recommendation for approval on both of these items, that this is a good project, it is in keeping and consistent with prior approvals, unfortunately, the SDR would not have been accepted and agendized and before you tonight without the major modification being added to it. Unfortunately, these items are, at this time, irrecoverably connected, and the SDR is not a valid application for this board to take action on if the mod is not a part of it. So, again, as I believe staff has already stated, the, they can both be withdrawn, that is completely possible, they can both be tabled, they can both be obeyed, but whatever action you take on one this evening needs to be taken on the other. One cannot be, the SDR at least, cannot be acted upon without the mod being attached to it. It's not a valid application, and I would have to, as the Director of Planning, ask that the SDR be struck as an incomplete application if the mod is not attached to it.
Well, I disagree, and I find that to be a very unfortunate and a very capricious attitude to take in a situation where I think that we have a developer here who has every right to build. I think that they've been granted much higher densities in the past, and I don't see grounds for requiring a major modification at this point. I haven't heard anything tonight that tells me a major modification should be required on this site, and if I have to fight you on it, then I am going to make a motion to deny item 32 and approve item 33, and that's what I'm going to do tonight. So what I'd like to do is make a motion for item number 32 to be denied, that's SDR, no, I'm sorry, MOD 75206, that's the motion on the floor.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in for a moment, I guess I have the unfortunate, I'm in the unfortunate seat here of being the voice of the legal department here, and I'll give only that portion that's relevant to the legal analysis. The reason why a major modification is required, and I understand the history, I appreciate that you've done your homework on what we've dealt with, the city's done on major mods and we haven't done in the past. Unfortunately, what we're dealing with at the moment is two orders, an order from Judge Crockett, which was then followed, again, in a separate order by Judge Williams, analyzing the Picoli Ranch Phase Two Plan and concluding that modifications of those plans are required. My view is that's the state of the law as it is today, and that's the grounds for staff saying that the application would be incomplete without the major modification as a companion item. What, if I could add to this conversation, I think when you, the applicant first came up, or you were gonna, in housekeeping, you're asking for a withdrawal without prejudice on 32?
Yep.
And to table 33?
Yes.
And then I believe you said that it wouldn't be your firm that comes back, but at some point, it would, if it's required, if it's required, while that time when it's tabled and it's worked out and it comes back, that the project would come back.
Yeah, that's what we've offered, that's the safest way to handle the application, regardless of the disappointment that we have a developer ready to move forward, but that's the safest way. It's no different than tonight, 22, 23 were tabled, and related items 24, 25 were withdrawn. You deal with this all the time, and that's what I'm saying is, that's why I started this way, it's logical, it makes sense of what we're asking.
And we've had other applications where applications had to catch up so they could be heard at one time.
Yes.
But can we, so the question initially was, voting on it, which you're saying would make it an incomplete application, with this route of withdrawing one and tabling the other, that seems like it's a legal route to go. So, under Title 19, 16, the general requirements section, and maybe it's better to put it this way, if, if they had come to staff with the SDR without the companion mod, it would not have even made it on the agenda, at least I think that's what Robert would tell you, because it would not be complete without the mod. So that, that's one way to think of, think of it as, and that's why it's not complete.
Excuse me, through you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a quick comment that's not of legal or anything. I find it completely appalling that down the street we're holding Queens Ridge hostage, and now we're about ready to hold this beautiful project that's been sitting there almost complete hostage. Shame on us. So, I look forward to helping you move forward, Mr. Gronauer, on this project.
And Commissioner, I would, I'd say, I largely agree with what you're saying, what Commissioner Roush is saying, we should be hearing 33 and, and voting on it tonight, you know? But it sounds like you're saying if we vote on 33, where we can't withdraw 33, we can't table it either. Is that...
Mr. Chairman, what I'm saying is, unfortunately, because the, the current law is that a modification is required in order to change this project, even though it is a previously approved project, and again, staff is recommending approval of these things, we are not against this project, we believe full, wholeheartedly in this project. Unfortunately, procedurally, you cannot act on the SDR, even to table it, because that is acting on it. Nothing materially has changed in those cases that you were talking about where we've held an item so another action could catch up to it. Those are times when something has changed in the application that's resulted in a variance being needed or something else. In this case, this application has not changed tonight to indicate that we need to ask for a mod in the future to catch up to this item. We have a complete application right now with the mod and the SDR, they can be acted on together, one way or the other. The applicant is saying he can't let the mod go forward today, and that's unfortunate, because I think this commission would likely vote in favor of this project moving forward to city council as a package. But procedurally, you cannot vote on the SDR to take any action different than what you do with the mod, because the SDR is not a complete application without the mod as it sits there tonight on your agenda.
So, so when it comes, if, if it was tabled, the only way it could come back is with a major mod, right?
So, I'm saying, well, it cannot be heard again, but the, the issue is that if you table it without, you're basically, you're taking action on an incomplete application. If you table it, you are, are moving it along in the process, and it's an incomplete application without the modification.
Hmm.
That, that's the crux of the issue. It is a procedural issue, but it is, that is the crux of the issue, is that without the mod, it is not a complete application, and therefore should not be on this agenda for you to take any action, table or otherwise.
Mr. Chairman, then I have to say shame on the city. Shame on the city, because you're asking this application, our applicant, to sit here and attach something to a property that doesn't need to be attached to. If you look, your own, just because Judge Crockett and Judge Williams made a decision doesn't necessarily mean it was the right decision. I make decisions all day long, half of them are probably wrong, who knows, down the road. But at the end of the day, your own statute doesn't even call for a major modification on, on your own website, your own stuff. So you're forcing this application, holding him hostage as far as I'm concerned, for moving this job forward, all because you want him to conform to something that, to me, in layman's terms, is you're making this gentleman join an HOA when he doesn't need to be a part of one. You're tying his hands and telling him, if he doesn't move this forward, I'm gonna take your entitlement away from you, and you're not gonna get what you want. I think that's totally wrong, because you're going against your own deal. Judge Crockett made a PV decision which calls for a modification when this is an RPD seven property. You're making him do something he don't have to do, and I don't understand, and I stand with Commissioner Roush, and, and Commissioner Quinn and anybody else that wants to do it. I don't think this, this applicant, it should be withdrawn on 32, and it should be tabled on 33, because if not, you're, you're stopping this, as far as I'm concerned, the city's stopping this application for moving forward to, to build this beautiful deal, like she, like Commissioner Roush said, the density is one-third of what was approved in the beginning. Yes, it might not be 10 stories, it's now six, so instead of vertical, it's more horizontal, I get it, it works, it conforms, it fits the community, it's harmonious and compatible, and I don't think that the city should take the position and force him, just because a judge made an order, that is not right. Nowhere in this order, nowhere in this order does it even mention Tivoli. It mentions the southwest corner, 17.49 acres on Queens Ridge, has nothing, nothing in here mentions what you're making this application have to do. So for that, I can't support pushing this down the road with a major modification. I'll take it the other way, where if we could go along with doing a withdrawal on 32 and a tabling on 33, so we could kind of work something out here?
Yeah.
Because right now, you're, the city's holding this applicant hostage from moving forward.
Yeah. Just, the, one quick point is, I just came through with another application in town center, up in the northwest, where we're required later on to come in with a major modification. That did not hold up that application going through the process itself. I feel that I'm in the same position as that other application that just came through in the city. I'm asking, don't treat us any differently. This, this here can be resolved, okay? Resolved, as I said, is with the proposal that I made, it's unfortunate that we couldn't do this before the meeting tonight, and now we gotta air out dirty laundry, and this is not good for the city, it's not good for related development coming here into Nevada and the city of Las Vegas to do development, it's just not good for any of us. The easiest way to deal with this, you have the ability to make those decisions, if your staff doesn't like it, and I don't like your decision, I'll appeal it, staff will appeal it, we'll go to city council and fight it, I'm totally fine with that. It's unfortunate, we had a solution here, there's about five private parties that have significant interest in this, and this is a way to deal with it, otherwise you're exposing yourself to liability all around here. That's not the right business decision to make here tonight. If you do what we do here, this application may go away, it will get resolved, something will happen here where we don't have to spend an hour going back and forth and interpretations. And that's where I want to be, and that's what I proposed from the beginning, and it's unfortunate, because there's very good people in this process here, and we could all agree to disagree, but the most important thing is, this is the safest way to go, and as I said, just because you make a decision that staff and city attorney, you've made those decisions before, or whatever I say, and that's fine, I'll live with it, and I'll appeal if I don't like it, your staff could appeal it, there's another day at city council that we can deal with. Commissioner Slavon, did you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I guess my final comments, right, wrong, or indifferent, I don't know about the major modifications, so therefore, I don't feel that it's appropriate to vote and move any of this forward tonight. However, on 32, I mean, if we want, want to strike that item, or, which are all without prejudice, I heard a comment earlier that if we voted on SDR, the SDR would be pushing it forward. I don't think we'd necessarily be pushing it forward, it would be just...
Table.
Table on it, which means no actions being taken, and then, and then at that point, if it comes back, then we can make a, have a better informed decision from, and have more input from our planning director and our city attorneys, so we can understand this application a lot better.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. And Commissioner Roush, I would say I would echo that, and would be supporting that if 32 was withdrawn and 33 was tabled, so you know, however you make your motion.
Absolutely, and so I'd like to make the motion that item number 32 be withdrawn without prejudice, and that item number 33 be tabled to a future date.
Let's, let's hear 32 be withdrawn without prejudice, please, there's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Item number 33, SDR 74852, do I got that correct? Yes, be tabled to a future date.
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your date, cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Thank you very much, and I apologize that we took this much time, and hopefully we'll get this resolved in the future.
And if it needs to come back with a major mod, it comes back with a major mod.
And I understand that, and if it comes back with a major mod, I will not be standing here, okay?
I understand, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to 18, in the public hearing items portion of the agenda, abeyance SUP 73268, applicant owner Sabah Taylor Akbar, for possible action request for a special use permit for special short-term residential rental use with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a similar use where 660 feet is required at 150 North Las Vegas Boulevard Unit 1013 Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to operate a short-term residential rental unit that does not meet the minimum required distance separation of 660 feet from a similar use. The applicant will also not comply with the owner-occupied requirement of the conditional use requirements. Therefore, per Title 19, a special use permit has been requested. Code enforcement opened a case at the subject property for the illegal operation of a short-term residential rental use at the subject property on January 28, 2018. At this time, the case remains unresolved. The proposed short-term residential rental use will not be compatible within the existing mixed-use development due to the existing short-term residential rental uses currently licensed within the building. Therefore, staff recommends denial. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here on item number 18? I don't see the applicant. We are still going to hear the item tonight. This was noticed as a public hearing, and anyone from the public like to be heard. I'll need your name and address from the record.
Christopher Gurs, 150 Las Vegas Boulevard, North the Ogden. So, I'll keep this brief with, so just like the last five times this applicant was up here, or they obeyed four times, we'd ask this to be denied. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being brief. Anyone else like to be heard in this item? We have three microphones, if you'd like to come up. Let's see, one more person.
This is the public part of the?
This is the public portion, sir, yes. I need your name and address to the record, sir.
Yes, Eddie Redham is the name. I'd first like to acknowledge that I'm grateful for all things, the mat and accommodations that are made over at the courtyard. However, I am very disappointed in, actually, this department and the one that preceded it, not only here, but in Henderson, North Las Vegas.
Mr. Redham, are you talking about item number 18, the short-term rental?
Well, I'm talking about homelessness.
No, we're talking about item number 18.
Oh, this is not the homeless part?
No, this is item number 18.
Okay, so I'll wait for the homeless.
And, Mr. Redham, that item actually passed. It was up earlier. So, that item passed already? That you're, I believe you're talking about the new center that was proposed?
But I didn't hear you guys welcome the public participation.
I opened up the public hearing, yeah.
Well, your mic was so low, I was begging you over there, could you cut it up a little bit?
Okay, if, at the end of the agenda, there's a portion, if you'd like to come on the record with the items, which is close to where the items were, if you'd like to come at that portion and comment, you're welcome to do that, sir.
Right, yeah, as long as you let me address this council.
Happy to do it. Thank you. Anyone else in the public on item number 18? Seeing no one else, I will close this and turn it over to the commission.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as we've typically voted in the past on projects in Newport, Soho Lofts, and the Ogden, these places really weren't built for short-term rentals. There's a lot of residents that purchased in the Ogden that did not think it was going to be a short-term rental, and until there's further clarification, I'm not going to be able to vote yes on any of those short-term rentals. So, if there's no other comments, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
On item 18, abeyance SUP 73268, I move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 20, abeyance SUP 74277, applicant owner Francisco A. Garcia, for possible action request for a special use permit for proposed short-term residential rental use at 3340 Esquina Court, Ward Four. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use would not meet the conditional use requirements requiring it to be owner-occupied during each period the unit is rented, and to contain three or fewer bedrooms. Therefore, a special use permit is required. In addition, code enforcement has opened a case for the illegal operation of a short-term residential rental at the subject property, which is still active. However, the site meets distance separation requirements, and the use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with existing land uses. Staff therefore recommends approval of the, of this item, subject to conditions. At this time, I'd like to turn this presentation over to Planning Department Deputy Director Mary McElhome for further information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Code enforcement has an active case on this location since June 19 of 2018. A notice and order was issued to cease and desist July 9 of 2018. The short-term rental continued to operate, and short-term renters were found to be in the location, staying from August 16 through August 22 of 2018. A fine was assessed of $3,500, and that fine is still outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Commissioner Chairman, Edgar Montalvo, representing the owner. He present 2209 Tosca Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, 19128, 89128. Yep, we've been here before, and we've been asked to do certain stuff. We talk about this case, and we follow certain steps to get here again. It took us a couple of months to get here. One of the things that we did is, we took the recommendation from you, and we have the certificate of achievement for the short-term rental certificate course, and it was granted by the CSN. And also, we have done, we have a meeting with the neighbors, where we held it on our own, and we didn't have any attendance of that. We sent out 675 invitations, and only one person would attend to the meeting. We tried, we tried to, we tried to do whatever is needed. As you see, we have, we start with the left foot, this process. We've been trying to fix it, and we've been trying to do whatever is needed to have this application approved. So, this house, because of the location, we don't have those type of renters that are a nuisance for the neighbors. They're pretty much their families, and sometimes they only came here for visiting, and it's not close to the downtown or to the streets, so where people, you know that they're coming to party. Over here, sometimes it's people visiting their family, or people coming from some conventions, or stuff like that, but it's not really a nuisance for the family. We've been trying to do our best for that, and over here, the owner, he lives five minutes away from the property. This house was before his own house, and he's still in the same neighborhood. So we're not one of those homeowners, and they're just getting a property, they've been renting it out. He's part of the community. He's an active member of his church, and he has a company, which is, which is an air conditioning company, and it's been on the value for many years. So I will have to give to you guys the certificate of achievement that we have, and the list of attendance for the meeting that we have, so you can keep it on the records. And I don't know if you have any questions for that.
Okay, thank you. If you want to turn those over for the record, I'm going to open the public hearing. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in these items, on this item, item number 20. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I'm going to turn it over to the commission for additional questions.
I just have a question through you before Commissioner Toussaint speaks. Excuse me, Ms. Mary. Mary, did you say there was an open investigation on this house, or, I didn't quite hear, well, I heard what you said, but I didn't comprehend it. Is there an open invitation, I mean, there's an open case on this house?
Mr. Chair, to you, through you, to Commissioner Quinn, yes. There is an open case on this property right now. Usually, we keep these cases open until they ultimately get resolved. At this point in time, they have fees assessed in the amount of $3,500, and those fees are still owed and outstanding.
That's all I needed to hear. Thank you, Ms. Mary.
Thank you. Commissioner Toussaint?
Yeah, this is disconcerting to me that they have an open case, and there's still money owed on this property. I believe that you've tried to do everything you can. You have the certificate, and you had the notice of the neighbors, and nobody showed up, and I understand that. But I'm really, really concerned about this open case and this $3,500, and it looks like you haven't done anything to resolve it, or your client hasn't. So, with saying that, I would love to say that I would make a motion to approve, but because of the open code enforcement issue, I'm going to have to deny the request. So my motion would be to deny.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. A yes vote is for denial. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward to city council and be heard as a part of their meeting on February 6. So you will be heard by council on February 6.
Right.
We'll be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 21, abeyance SUP 74282, applicant alone, owner LPP Las Vegas Limited Co., for possible action request for a special use permit for proposed short-term residential rental use with a waiver to allow a 617-foot distance separation from a similar use where 660 feet is required at 2200 Nordica Court, Ward One. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use does not meet the conditional use requirements requiring for it to be owner-occupied during each time the unit is rented, to contain three or fewer bedrooms, and is also located within 660 feet from another short-term residential rental use. Therefore, a special use permit with a waiver of distance separation is required. Code enforcement has an open case for the illegal operation of a short-term residential rental at the subject property, which remains unresolved. The site does not meet distance separation requirements, and the use cannot be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with existing land uses. Therefore, staff recommends denial, if approved, subject to conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you get your name and address for the record, please?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Nathan Taylor, 8414 West Farm Road, representing the applicant. Before I give my brief presentation, and it will be very brief, which I'm sure you'll like, I just want to address something. It's disappointing that I have to address it, but I pondered this all day and prayed on it, and I'm going to address it. And it has to do with the opposition to this application. So let me first by saying, as all of you know, I'm before this board about every month, representing a small business owner or a property owner, facilitating applications. They're legally and procedurally allowed to be heard before the city. Oftentimes, there are neighbors or adjacent business owners that show up in opposition. Well, that's just part of the territory. I can appreciate and respect one's ability to disagree with anything that I or anyone else brings before the planning commission or the city council. However, what I find absolutely disgusting is that someone would send out an email to God knows how many people in this community, attacking my character, attacking my good name and reputation that I've spent over 20 years building. My feelings are hurt, because I don't have thin skin, but I think it's important for you guys to hear this. I think it's unfair, I think it's disingenuous, and I think attacking someone without merit is completely wrong. And I think we can all agree on that. I end with this. In my over 20 years of doing land use consulting applications, I have never, never had a neighbor, or anyone in a neighborhood, instruct other neighbors not to sign in at a neighborhood meeting. And just to make sure that it can't be said that I'm making this up, all of you have copies of the emails I obtained with the instructions not to sign in at my meeting, and attacking my character, and calling me names, which again, my feelings are hurt. I want this on the record. The city clerk has copies of these emails as well, and with that, I will go forward with my presentation, but I thought that needed to be said. Thank you.
Chairman Cherry, I apologize. I tried to jump in, I didn't get a chance. I wanted to recuse myself from this vote. I have had past business dealings with this representative, and I don't feel that I can be objective, so I'm going to excuse myself from the meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
Now, for my brief presentation, Mr. Chairman, we are respectfully requesting approval of this application and the distance separation of 617 feet from another like use. In essence, 43 feet is the difference between what's required by the ordinance. This property owner does not live in Las Vegas full-time, but does have a full-time hired property manager. This property is a second home for the owners, and when they are in town, which they were about 10 days ago, I think, they stayed in the home. And they will stay in the home every time they come to Las Vegas, because they love Las Vegas, like a lot of people do. What they would like to do is have the ability to use this property as a vacation rental when they're not in town. They have made a substantial investment in this property, and have every intention of doing things the right way. When they initiated the process, when they bought, when they initially purchased the property, they genuinely did not know the rules in the city. I had many discussions with them. They were ignorant to the laws and the rules in the city. We've had some folks like that over the last year and a half, that just didn't understand the rules. Once they were made aware of the rules, they hired an attorney, and unfortunately, that attorney gave them bad advice. Then my office was contacted after the application was already submitted, so we did not prepare this application, we did not submit this application. We were contacted after it was already in the system. It's important to note that we held two voluntary neighborhood meetings, two voluntary neighborhood meetings. At the first meeting, the neighbors were concerned that the owners were not present at the meeting. It was just me, my representatives, and neighbors. So, in order to address the neighbors' concerns that the owners were not present at the first neighborhood meeting, we held a second voluntary neighborhood meeting. The owners came to town, all of them, and we had a second neighborhood meeting. All of the concerns of the neighbors were like the ones we have heard over the last year and a half. This could happen, that could happen, basically hypotheticals. My clients understand that there are rules and strict regulations that they must comply with in order to have a special use permit. You all have the presentation that my clients spent a lot of time on, and putting together. They already have security systems in place, noise detectors, they have onsite parking, smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, and a strict rental agreement. With that, I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard. I see a few people. If there's three microphones, if you could please come up to three microphones, give your name and address for the record, if you're for or against, and why. I'll give each person a minute to tell us why.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. I'm Michael Maggiore. I reside at 2200 Nordica Court, 2201 Nordica Court. I am the immediate neighbor to the west. I have experienced many disturbances throughout the evening, evenings, in question, where Uber arrives, where Lyft arrives, where limo buses arrive, where taxi cabs arrive, where private cars arrive, at all hours of the early morning, not the normal hours in a residential neighborhood. I request that this be denied based upon this private street, Nordica Court, not experience the disturbances that have continually arisen from the improper operation of this investment property. Also, for the record, the gentleman that just spoke was not present at the second neighborhood meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Name and address, please, for the record.
Sure, Hal Jones. I'll try and be brief. I don't believe what the previous gentleman stated is accurate with the open code enforcement file, and that there have been violations. That's not just neighbors complaining, saying the same thing over and over. So if you want to clarify that with code enforcement, I think that would correct the record based on what he said, which was incorrect. There have been violations, okay? I'm also part of the Buffalo Coalition Neighborhood Association. Many people don't have time to come here. They don't have time to go to the neighborhood meetings that was called. My next-door neighbors are both physicians, operating room physicians. They don't have time. There's a lot of neighbors like that. And so, just because we don't have, you know, 30 people show up at these meetings, doesn't mean we're not representing the 20, I think it's 2,000, over 2,000 homes, like 2,300 homes in our neighborhood association. And the vast majority of the association neighbors are against short-term rentals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you get your name and address, please, for the record, sir?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Dan Dion. I'm a resident and owner at 2261 Nordica Court. I've been there almost two years. I spent a good year looking for a nice, quiet neighborhood to live in, and with my line of work, I really do need my rest. So, that's where I'm going to leave it with you. I don't know if anybody would ever want to be on an airplane with their pilot, has been interrupted during his sleep that night. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you name an address, please, for the record?
Hello, I'm Leanna Alvarez Maggiore, also the resident at 2201 Nordica Court, and obviously, in the opposition of this. Also, just for the record, we are in representation for Mrs. Willett Jackson, who's located at 2260 Nordica, who's elderly and not physically capable of leaving the property. So she did ask that we represent her opposition as well. So she did ask that we represent her opposition as well. Again, just in statement, this is a quiet neighborhood. We don't, we're happy that the neighbors use the property as their, you know, primary residence or second home, but are opposed to a short-term rental for the items previously mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you get your name and address, for the record, please?
Good evening. I'm Teri O'Rourke, 22,000 Palm Canyon Court. We went to both of the meetings as requested by Mr. Nathan Taylor. The first meeting, the owners weren't there. They requested the second meeting, as he stated, with the owners. Mr. Taylor was not at that meeting. And the premise of that meeting was the owners have a $3,500 a month mortgage and they're going to have to use this home as a short-term rental to be able to make that payment. That's not our neighborhood, that neighborhood's problem. The mortgage is their problem, not ours. And they started out on the wrong foot with us. They didn't come around to meet all of us. They've had terrible, big, huge parties. And it's a lovely home with a big bar in it, so it's inviting for those kind of activities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed, yes. Thank you. See, one more person, a couple more people. We have a couple of microphones, if folks you want to come up. Need your name and address, for the record, please?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Tom Dudas. I'm at 1917 Verdinal.
Tom, could you spell your last name, please?
It's D-U-D-A-S.
Thank you.
Yes. And the gentleman that was representing the client mentioned that there is now a property I would ask that any short-term rental has a licensed property manager and that the state does have licensing and fees associated with property managers. And that in the particular situation of this being a foreign owner or a group of foreign owners and the inability to actually contact and direct any kind of request for control of the occupants at the, at one particular time, have a local licensed property manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudas. Name and address, please.
Hi, Chris Jones. I'm at 7811 Dana Point Court, which is really just on the other side of Nordica, so it's within the noise level, if it were. I had two points. One, and I've brought this to the Commission before, is that these are private streets, and many people don't realize that, but what that does is that actually puts us, the homeowners that live on those streets, into additional liability because our homeowners' policies do not protect us and they are not going to insure us if there's somebody running a business on that street. So essentially, a business running on that street, homeowner policies will not cover that. That puts us at risk as homeowners. We didn't ask to take on this risk, and so we're very concerned should somebody fall down or something else, or in fact, getting our homeowner policies canceled. So that's very concerning. The other point I wanted to make real quick is that this is an investment property. I was there both times, speaking to the representatives and then the homeowners. What they clearly outright said is they went into this as an investment. They bought this property. They actually bought it outright, so correction there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm finishing. So they basically bought this property and they said clearly to us, if we cannot short-term rent this place, then we can't afford it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So I'm concerned about that.
Can I get your name and address, please, for the record?
Chuck Hauser, 2231 Nordica Court. I'm an attorney here, representing my wife and myself. We live directly across the cul-de-sac. Besides from the normal problems that a short-term rental would cause with the interruptions of moral life and stuff, this applicant has particular burden because the ordinance has been adopted since this application was passed requires that you can't have more than three bedrooms. They have five here. Has to be owner-occupied. This won't be. So this application couldn't even be filed now. But besides making the normal burden that this applicant has to show, the applicant also has to show why he should, an exception from owner-occupied or be allowed to have more than three bedrooms. I believe this application should be denied.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser.
Excuse me. Through you, Mr. Chairman, may I ask Mr. Hauser a question, please?
Please.
Mr. Hauser, how many houses are on that circle?
There's six houses on Nordica Court.
Six. Thank you, sir.
It's a private street with a cul-de-sac.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one else, I'll turn it over to Mr. Taylor. Before your rebuttal, I will say I do see the Exhibit A where you were called swarmy.
Yeah, I had to look that up on Google. Had you heard that one before?
I don't think it's a word. I think they meant smarmy.
Mr. Chairman, I had to look that up on Google.
I'm pretty sure swarmy. And listen, I, Nathan, I've disagreed with you on many things and I've agreed with you on things, you know, just, but I will say, I don't think, when it's swarmy, I think it's pirate talk, like you're a scallywag.
You know, it's interesting. I find it interesting.
I don't think you're that person, seeing that.
I appreciate it.
Whether I disagree or agree with you.
I appreciate that.
But please, your rebuttal.
My rebuttal will be very quick. First of all, I was brought into this and my firm was hired after they had a violation, is what I was told. So they did make mistakes. I never represented before you that they didn't make mistakes. They didn't understand what they were doing when they got into this, and then it is what it is. They hired a lawyer. They didn't want whatever, whoever they worked with, whatever attorney they were, it didn't work out. They contacted us and they hired our firm. So whatever happened prior to me being hired and doing what you know I've done with all of my clients over the last year and a half and clearly instructing them that when you're going through the application process, do not rent your home, it was represented to me that they haven't. Whatever happened prior to me coming on board, I can't represent that. I can only represent what I did since I was hired to represent this client. No, I was not at the second neighborhood meeting and nor anywhere in my presentation did I indicate I was at the second neighborhood meeting. Two of my staff members were there at the neighborhood meeting. Tina Brown and Angela Crowley were at the neighborhood meeting, okay? I was not there, but that's neither here nor there, okay? We have run a business and I'm in a meeting and someone else is in a meeting, so that's neither here nor there. I also never said that there were not any violations. Let me make that clear. I didn't say that. I think it's important to note that there are foreign business owners, actually thousands of foreign business owners in Nevada that own not only businesses, but property. Worth noting, I think. Also, too, there's a lot of home-based businesses, you know, I think I've made this statement before, but there's a lot of home-based businesses and other uses within residential that are allowed in the city of Las Vegas. I just think that's worth noting. Whether or not, whether or not you prove this tonight or not, it's worth noting that my clients do have property rights and there are other home-based businesses that they are allowed to have by law in the city of Las Vegas. So with that, Mr. Chairman and Board members, I'm answering, answering questions.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to the Commission for discussion. And I'll just quickly say, Commissioner, before your comments, that, you know, when I see staff recommends denial, it's asking for the waiver and it has a little more history. I just, I think historically you'll see, I'm just a no vote with that, especially with, you know, some opposition coming out. That's where I stand at the moment. You know, I'd love to hear Commissioner Quinn's comments.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Taylor, you know, we've worked on plenty of these together. We've passed a lot and we've denied a few.
Yes.
And you know, my stand on anything is, the councilwoman wrote the ordinance and she wrote it at 660 feet, which you were short of, even though it's 43 feet.
Yes.
That doesn't bother me. What bothers me is when you have a cul-de-sac of six houses and five of the neighbors are here and the only person missing is your applicant because five neighbors of a cul-de-sac of six people don't want it. That speaks volumes to me, and you know that, right?
I do.
So you have neighborhood opposition. I appreciate you. I hold you in the highest respect, but this evening, my motion will be for denial of SUP 7274282. Thank you.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. That motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a quick question through you, Mr. Chairman. Can I appeal this to the City Council or is it this final action? You jumped my gun there. Mr. Chairman, this item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days. Thank you, sir. For a hearing at Council. Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Okay. Moving on to...
I'm really sorry to ask this question, but then do we need to come back again?
No.
We're just sitting here.
You can check with our staff, but if the item is appealed, then it will have another hearing. But as of right now, it is final action this evening.
Thank you.
26th was withdrawn. We should be, yes, right. All right. All right. Moving on to item number 34. Applicant, or item number 34ZON75126, applicant owner Dr. Horton, Inc., for possible action requests for residential, for rezoning from RE to RD at the northwest corner of La Madre Way and Jones Boulevard, Ward 4. Staff recommends approval. Related item 35VIR75127, for possible action requests for variance to allow 1.0 connectivity where 1.3 is required, Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Item number, related item number 36, TMP75128, for possible action requests for tentative map for 20 lot, single-family residential subdivision, Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing a 20-lot, single-family residential subdivision on 6.43 acres. The request includes a rezoning from RE, Residence Estates, to RD, Single Family Residential Restricted. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding land uses and zoning districts. Staff recommends approval of the zoning request. The proposed development also requires a variance to allow a connectivity ratio of 1.0 where 1.30 is required. The applicant has presented no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance indicating that the hardship is self-imposed. Staff recommends denial of the variance request and the associated tentative map. If approved, the following condition changes will be required. Condition 2 will be deleted and replaced with the following added conditions. The first added condition would read, "A note shall be added to the final map for lots 1, 10, 15, and 16, stating that the owners of the respective lots are responsible for the irrigation and maintenance, including replacement of all landscaping materials within the landscape easements located along Jones Boulevard and La Madre Way." The second added condition would read, "The home builders shall place a permanent plaque in the garage adjacent to the irrigation controller of lots 1, 10, 15, and 16. The plaque shall identify the landscape maintenance requirement for each owner. Please note that there are additional letters of support since publication." Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Good evening. My name's Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing Dr. Horton in these three matters. If I get your attention quickly to the overhead here, you may be very familiar with this area property. This is La Madre. This is Jones Boulevard located here. Over the last couple of years, I've come in representing Dr. Horton where we've rezoned the properties in this area for RD zoning. We've recently got approval for this, this property up here for RD zoning and actually a similar application for ratio variance in the tentative map itself was approved. And now we're here finally completing the last piece of the puzzle in this area of this infill piece of property, coming in with RD zoning, 10,000 to 12,000 square foot lots. This completes the area of something that was a little bit of a hole here over the last couple of years, so we're excited that we could finally complete this area out. We'd ask you to approve the zone change and approve the variance in the tentative map, which is no different than what's been approved for the project to the north up here.
Thank you. This was noticed as a public hearing and in from the public like to be heard. Seeing no one, excuse me, I'll close the public hearing, turn it over to the Commission for discussion. Commissioner Tussaud?
Hi, Mr. Gronauer. I love this project. I think it's a great project and I think it's going to be really wonderful for this community. You have my support on all three of these items. Are you okay with the conditions that staff?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I am.
Are you okay with those?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. With that, I would like to make a motion to approve number 34ZON75126.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 35VIR75127, make a motion to approve with conditions.
There's a motion on the floor. That motion carries.
And item 36, TMP75128, motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote as amended on the condition. That motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, those items will all move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their meeting on February 6th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 37, MDR75107, applicant owner of the Howard Hughes Company, LLC, for possible action requests for development plan review for someone, Village 25, at the northwest corner of Far Hills Avenue and Fox Hill Drive, Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. Can I get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing a development plan for the Summerlin Village 25 community. The proposed land uses and densities would allow up to 3,674 residential units, along with commercial, civic, and recreational facilities to support the residential neighborhoods. The proposed development plan meets the criteria required by the Summerlin Development Standards and the Summerlin West General Development Plan and has been approved by the master developer. Staff is recommending approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since application. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Good evening again. Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the master developer for Summerlin Master Plan. This is actually the Summerlin West Master Plan, which is west of the 215, right where the Summerlin Parkway today ends. This is a terrific, exciting project that will be coming forward to you within the next couple of years, but it's going to take several years to go through the development of the 500-plus acres, et cetera, of what we have in this area. But we're very excited what we have with the project here. Your staff is recommending approval, and with this approval, we'll be able to start moving forward with our plans for this area.
Thank you. This was noticed as a public hearing and in from the public like to be heard in this item. Seeing no one, I will turn it over to the Commissioner, Commissioner Roush, excuse me.
You sound terrible tonight, Chair Cherry. Would you like the vice chair to take over?
We'll see if the voice holds up for the rest of the night.
You know, Howard Hughes Corp. is exemplary in the neighborhoods that they design and develop and the products that their builders deliver. So I don't have any problems with this project, but I do have a question for staff. I noticed that in the comments, you said that there were additional letters or something of protest, postcards of protest that were received after...
Mr. Chairman, through you, yes, those are accounted for in your backup in the records received after posting or publication.
Looks like three, three additional. Is that what?
Right. But, so I'm asking, do you, did they have comments on them or they were just postcards that said that we protest? I'm sorry to put you through this, but I have never had anybody protest to Howard Hughes Corporation Development and if they have, and since it's not on our screens and I can't see what their comments are, I really just want to make sure that I'm not overlooking somebody that really wanted to be heard and had a viable point and hate to hold up the meeting. I apologize, fellow commissioners, but I just want to make sure.
I feel the same.
If they just checked the box, I oppose, then I'm just going to say it was random, but if there's a viable reason, then I'd like to know. but if there's a viable reason, then I'd like to know. Is it just boxes checked?
Commissioner Roush, it's just the box is what the director is seeing right now.
That being said, I'd like to make a motion for approval of item number thirty-seven, M D R seven five one zero seven.
There's a motion on the floor? Please cast your votes. That motion carries.
Thank you very much, and have a good night.
You too, thank you. Moving on to item number thirty-eight, V A R seven three four five four. Applicant Lamar Central Outdoors LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I was still trying to put my paperwork away there. That item will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on February sixth, twenty nineteen.
Thank you. Item number thirty-eight, V R seven three four five four. Applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC. Owner, City of Las Vegas. For possible action request for variance to allow a proposed ninety-foot-tall off-premise sign where forty feet is allowed, is zero-foot setback from freeway right-of-way, where ten feet is required on the south side of Adams Avenue, west of Interstate Fifteen, Ward Five. Staff recommends approval. And related item thirty-nine, S U P seven two six zero six, for possible action request for special use permit for fourteen-foot by forty-eight-foot off-premise sign use. Ward Five, staff recommends approval. Can I get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing an off-premise sign on a property adjacent to the West Side School as part of the city's parquet program, and is designed with a historic West Side musical theme. The requested height is necessary to provide visibility from Interstate Fifteen due to the lower elevation of the sign base and the presence of sound walls, and includes approximately ten feet of, of frame and parquet theme above the display. An additional variance to allow no setback from a public right-of-way is also requested due to the irregular shape of the lot and the distance separation requirement from residential his own property to the north. Staff is recommending approval of both applications.
Thank you very much. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive, here tonight representing the applicant. We really want to thank staff for working with us on this application. We're proud of the design. We think it looks great, and we'd ask you to follow staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. This was noticed as a public hearing and anyone from the public like to be heard in this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, turn it over to the commission. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chairman Cherry. This is a very much-needed marquee, and I have no problems with it. So I move to approve item number thirty-eight, V A R seven three four five four.
There's a motion on the floor? Please cast your votes. That motion carries.
Motion to approve item thirty-nine, S U P seven two six zero six.
There's a motion on the floor? Please cast your votes. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, those items will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on February sixth, twenty nineteen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to item number forty, V A R seven four eight five seven. Applicant area fifteen, Las Vegas LLC. Owner, Tabarias LLC. For possible action request for variance to allow a ninety-five-foot lot with, width where a hundred feet is required for Lot One in a proposed four-lot subdivision at the northwest corner of Deer Springs Way and Thon Boulevard, Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. Related item forty-one, V A R seven four eight five eight, for possible action request to allow variance to allow ninety-six-foot lot width where a hundred feet is required for Lot Four in a proposed four-lot subdivision, Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. Can I get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to subdivide a large lot into four residential lots. Two of the lots will not meet the minimum lot width required for the RE zoning district. The lots will be ninety-five and ninety-six feet in width where a hundred feet is required. Both lots will exceed the minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet, with one lot at twenty-three thousand four hundred ninety-eight square feet, and the other at twenty-four thousand two hundred and five square feet. Subdivided lots will match the existing pattern of subdivision in the area, as the same configuration exists immediately adjacent to the west, and staff is recommending approval of both items. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, Zach Broyles, seventy-two twenty-nine West Sahara Avenue. Just here to answer questions. The applicant is, is here as well, if anything comes up, but I agree with staff. It was, it was kind of an oddball property. We had a couple in the neighborhood, and this one was just a little bit narrower, and that's why we had to, I don't want to say get creative, because the property, like you said, directly west of us, did the same configuration, but we made some adjustments to this, and, and to, to meet the minimum area requirements, we had to narrow two of the lots to make it all work.
Thank you. It was Zach, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Zach. Okay, this was noticed as a public hearing and anyone from the public like to be heard. I see a few people. Zach, if you could just step aside, I'll let these people come for the public hearing portion. I'll need your name, address for the record, if you're for or against.
Rick Foster, five zero two five Encore Paradise. I'm, I'm kind of in the middle of this. I don't see anything as far as it being two-story buildings. I'd like that to, are these single-story at this point? Because the, all surrounding areas are all single, and horses, and, and small, small houses. So I just, I'm not sure by the letter that was sent out if it was, what size houses that were going in, and how high they were.
Thank you. I'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Paul Ponrudin, five zero zero nine Encore Paradise. And I agree with Rick, as it's kind of hard to make a decision on or approve or disapprove a thing without knowing what's actually going in there. Obviously, we want those lots developed, but we don't need any two-story houses in that neighborhood. They're all single-story, and something consistent with that would be approvable, but anything less than that wouldn't, wouldn't sit with well with neighbors. We never met with anybody, so I don't know if they ever tried to reach out and, and see what the neighbors felt about what they were going to do.
Thank you for your comments. Can I get your name and address for-
My name is James Seals, and my address is fifty seventeen Encore Paradise. I'm right on the corner of Tom and Deer Springs, and property there would certainly look over into my property if it was two-story. So our main concern really is the property, two-story, one-story, and entrance to the property.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing, and Zach, if you could come back up to the podium, we'll give you a couple minutes for a rebuttal and to maybe answer some of the questions.
Yeah, it's not really much of a rebuttal. They are all single-story. That's what we have planned. Zoning doesn't dictate that, but just for your comfort, the, the homes that we're planning on placing here are single-story.
Okay. All right. I will turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner DeSalvio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to put the homeowners at ease, we, we did everything we could to make sure that this would conform what was already pre-existing, so that way it wasn't intrusive. So this project is harmonious and compatible. They are one-story. He had to ask for the variance of five feet, just due to the way it was laid out on the property, but just so you guys could be at ease, they, they will be one-story. So, with that said, I'd like to make a motion for approval for item number forty, V A R seven four eight five seven.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor? Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
And motion for approval, item number forty-one, V A R seven four eight five eight.
There's a motion on the floor? Please cast your vote. And that motion carries. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, those items are final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number forty-two, V A R seven five one one six. Applicant Clark County School District, owner, School Board of Trustees, for possible action request for variance to allow deviations from Title nineteen ten dot oh two C V Development Standards at four five five one Diamond Head Drive, Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. Related item forty-three, S D R seven five one one eight, for possible action request for site development plan review for proposed two-story, ninety-three thousand four hundred ninety square foot public school primary development, Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. Can I get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site consists of one parcel located on the southeast corner of Diamond Head Drive and Page Street. The subject site is currently zoned C V, which allows for uses operated and controlled by city, county, state, or federal government within the general plant, with the general plan designation of PF for public facilities. The applicant has proposed a site development plan review to develop the site with five new structures totaling ninety thou, ninety-three thousand four hundred and ninety square feet. The submitted justification letter indicates the existing school will be demolished after the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year and reopen for the two thousand and twenty twenty-one school year. Per Title nineteen, a variance is required to allow deviations from C V Development Standards to allow a thirty-eight-foot-tall building height where thirty-five feet is the maximum allowed, to allow trees within the proposed landscape buffers to be planted thirty-five feet, or to be planted twenty-five feet to thirty feet off-center where twenty feet off-center is the maximum allowed, to allow fifteen interior parking lot trees where thirty-four interior parking lot trees are required, to allow buildings within the development to not be oriented towards the front of the site, to allow the proposed parking lot to be located in the front corner of the subject site where subject parking lots are not allowed to be located, and to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the south and east property line where eight feet is the minimum required, and to allow a ten-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the west property line where fifteen feet is required. Staff has determined that the proposed development deviates from multiple Title nineteen C V Development Standards, therefore, staff recommends denial of the project and all associated land use entitlement applications. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Chairman and Council. For the record, my name is Wade Simpson, Simpson Culture Studio, representing the, the client, and with me is Linda Perry from the Clark County School District. And if I can, I'll just walk you through-
Please.
-some of the things. I don't know if this is oriented correctly or not, but, there you go. So, just to walk you through real quick, Diamond Head, Page, the two-story buildings are located closer to Page, away from the neighborhood. There's the drainage channel to the south, and there's adjacent neighbors to the east. It's a prototype school. It's been built at five other locations, most recently in the city of Vassiliatus Elementary School, is the same type of prototype. It will house eight hundred and forty-nine students. Some of the variances are very minor in, in nature, but we can definitely work with, with you and staff to, to mitigate whatever those needs are. Just to show you, there's a little bit right here where the bike rack is, that we don't have the landscape buffer, right here where the softball backstop is on the south side, adjacent to the drainage channel, where we don't have a landscape buffer, and then right up here on the west side, where we have ten feet, where we have a fire access turnaround, ten feet instead of the fifteen feet right there. I believe the, the one variance, while there's the, the parking lot orientation, of course, with the school, we really need the security and the parking to be on the perimeter of the campus, so that we can keep all the kids secured within the school and the playground areas. And then the trees in the parking lot, we were requested by Clark County School District Police to minimize the number of trees in the parking to allow their video cameras to help with their surveillance. The tree spacing along the perimeter, we can absolutely alter that and meet the city requirements. But with that, if you have any questions-
Thank you. Okay, this was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one from the public, I'll close the public hearing, turn it over to the commission. Commissioner Schlobman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you. I, I think a lot of these schools, they, they're built on old sites, and we don't have enough land to meet a lot of our, meet all of our codes, but I don't see that having the building thirty-eight feet where thirty feet, thirty-five feet is maximum allowed is that egregious. The, having the parking along the perimeter, it's typical of most schools. And then, I mean, the orientation of, of the school, I mean, it's, it is what it is for the safety of, of the students and having the courtyard and just the way that a lot of these, the schools blow, so if there's no, no other comments, I'd be ready to make a motion.
Let's see, Commissioner Roush has her light on.
I was just going to make a brief comment to the same effect. I mean, I think what Commissioner Schlobman's trying to say is that, you know, we, we are honored and blessed that we have the money to be able to build and renovate new schools, and that we should be doing whatever we can in our ability to approve these types of applications, so I'll be in favor of this tonight.
Great. Commissioner Schlobman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item forty-two, V A R seven five one one six, a move for approval, subject to staff's conditions based on testimony made, made and heard tonight.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor? Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, on item forty-three, S D R seven five one one eight, a move to approve, subject to staff's conditions, and that would be based on our testimony made tonight.
All right, there's a motion on the floor? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, those items are final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we are on fifty-three? No? Yep. Okay. S U P seven five one oh five, possible action request for a special use permit for proposed four thousand four hundred and ninety square foot beer-wine cooler off-sale establishment use at the northwest corner of Charleston Las Vegas Boulevard, Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. Related item fifty-four, S D R seven five one oh six, for possible action request for site development plan review for proposed four thousand four hundred and ninety square foot convenience store with fuel pumps and a canopy, and a one thousand one hundred and fifty square foot car wash, full service with waivers of the interim downtown Las Vegas Development Standards, Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. Before we ask for the staff report, I will say I live within the notification area. I will be voting on the item. I don't feel I'm affected in any greater or lesser than, than others. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to construct a convenience store with gas pumps and a car wash. Special use permit is required for the off-sale of beer, wine, and wine coolers. Waivers of the Las Vegas Downtown Interim Development Standards are required for build-to requirements, building orientation, and parking. The request of waivers will result in a site design that does not promote walkability and, and does not achieve the goal of a compact and vibrant environment as envisioned by the Vision twenty forty-five Downtown Las Vegas Master Plan. Staff is recommending denial of the applications because the site is proposed as a traditionally suburban design that emphasizes vehicular transit over a pedestrian-friendly urban environment in the eighteen B Arts District of Downtown Las Vegas. Please note that the postcards mailed out for this item describe the location of the site as the northeast corner of Charleston Boulevard and Las Vegas Boulevard due to a processing error during the creation of the cards. However, the item was properly notified regarding both the A P N numbers and the printed map on the cards, and, and was notified as the northwest corner for the agenda and meets the requirements of N R S for notification. Possible, please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address, please, for the record?
Good evening, Chris Richardson, RWA Architects, forty-three hundred East Sunset Road, Suite E three, on behalf of the applicant, Terrible Herbst. We've read through the staff report and take no exception to any of the if-approved conditions. In reading through that analysis, you can see that by and large, we're meeting all of the requirements for the S U P, and really, the argument before us is whether or not the, the use in the site design is appropriate for that corner. And our argument is, is that with three roadway frontage thoroughfares and being on the corner of two primary automobile thoroughfares, that the appropriateness of the uses is a difficult question, I guess, or a difficult argument to argue against. Typically, that's where we see uses like this, the gas station. And then in balancing the goals of the pedestrian environment and what it takes to program for a, a fuel station, we think that we've struck a, a fair balance to achieve that on such an oddly-shaped property. And otherwise, we agree with the conditions as, as presented.
Thank you. This was noticed as a public hearing and anyone from the public like to be heard. I see a few people. Mr. Richardson, if you could just step aside, I'll let the folks be heard. I'll need your name and address for the record, if you're for or against, and why, please?
Sure. David Figler, both thirteen oh two South Sixth Street and five fifty East Charleston Boulevard. Five fifty East Charleston is in the notification zone. I don't believe we got a notification for that. Thirteen oh South Sixth Street is not, although I am the president of the John S. Park Historic Neighborhood, and this does greatly impact our neighborhood. As I think staff touched upon, I haven't actually seen a eleven, such a lengthy, over ten-page staff report that outlines how it absolutely does not comport with any of the master plans and requires so many variances. I could go on for a long time. What I would suggest, because I think that the commission kind of knows our position, the Vision two, two oh four five, the Vision twenty forty-five Downtown Las Vegas Master Plan does not provide for a use of this nature. There is no traffic study before you. I think that, Chair Cherry, you absolutely know about the, the traffic bindups on Las Vegas Boulevard and Charleston, because you do live in that area, and the impact it has on those residents of the Soho Lofts and those also in our neighborhood and in the John S. Park neighborhood. I, I would feel that, and first of all, it's, it's quite disappointing, and I respect architects- I respect architects showing up on behalf of applicants for planning. This is a major change to this neighborhood, and I would have liked to see somebody, not only from the applicant up here today, but someone reach out to neighborhoods. I know that neighborhood meetings aren't required, but an open house certainly would have been nice, because we're not just talking about a car wash where there is a historic motel currently stated, the Gateway Motel, which presumably, from the plan, looks like it's going to be razed for what seems to be no reason other than to put something that's absolutely unneeded there. When you look over at the, it abuts another gas station, which is the AMPM, that's right there on Fourth. It wants to sell beer and wine, which is available at every kitty corner. It's across from the 711. It's across from the Walgreens, and the AMPM also sells, sells beer and wine. This is absolutely the most remarkably teneered, bad decision for the otherwise respectable Herbst family to put into this particular space. They have a wonderful historic motel. They have a long history of being involved in that market with hotels, et cetera. They could certainly come to the neighborhood and come up with a really good use there. But all the waiver requirements, the setbacks, it destroys the pedestrian vision. It destroys our ability to ride our bicycles over there. I mean, RTC has invested a great deal of money in the bike shares that are all over that neighborhood. It's already treacherous. I can't even imagine how many additional cars will be coming in and out and be jammed up, as staff designates in the report. There are so many variances, so many appendices that need to be amended for them to be able to move forward with this project. This isn't development, this is regression. And so, what I would ask that the Commission do tonight is to tell the applicant to reach out, to rethink, to talk to neighbors, to see exactly what their concerns are. The planning-
Mr. Figler.
...report, and I'll just wrap up with this, and I appreciate the extra time, because this did come as a surprise to us, because no one's really talked to us about this at all. But the report does outline a number of areas that should suggest to the applicant that a car wash and a convenience store that sells beer and wine is absolutely incompatible with the forward movingness of this, especially as form development comes in. And so, I'd ask that you'd ask them to obey it, to talk to us, and come back with something better.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Norton A. Roytmann, M.D. My resident address is 2016 Plaza de Cielo, 89102, and I'm, my wife and I are the owner of property at 914 and 918 Fourth Street, which, just tonight, I found out from my friend, Ms. Attorney Figler, that this project was planned. We received no notification. I've received many notifications about development in that area over the years. I don't understand. It's just serendipity that I was here to, for another matter, to be able to testify today. I originally helped support Julian and Len Adams Doris in the Cafe Enigma by loaning them money, and eventually, the property went into foreclosure.
Can we talk about the specific applications or-
Yes. So, this property, that's pending development, will now be scattered with ambient light and noise and cars that I'm certain will go through Fourth Street, adding to nonproductive traffic, and it will just deteriorate the quality of the art district, which is under good development now. There's something else that could go through. The hotel's name is Gateway. It should be a gateway to the art district, and this does nothing to enhance the nature of that culture.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Tammy Roytmann, 2016 Plaza de Cielo, and I am also the owner of 914 and 918 South Fourth Street. And my concern is, is that I, we have two rentals on our property, and I manage them, and I also clean up around that area. And with increased people walking the street, throwing garbage around, you know, when I don't have my property cleaned up, I get noticed for fines. So, with more people coming and using our property, walking through it, we already have this problem with AMPM and people walking through the alley and just throwing things everywhere. I have a big problem with that, coming from both directions, and our property is going to be right in back of this particular location. So, I don't agree with it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I'll ask the applicant to come back up. I'll give you a couple of minutes for rebuttal, and I'll turn it over to the Commission for discussion.
Yeah, respectfully, just a short rebuttal, I guess, if you will. The primary concentration of the lengthy staff report actually spoke in favor of how we were meeting the requirements for the special use permit. Again, I think that, at, really, the heart of the discussion is whether or not the use is a good fit and the form of that use being a good fit. And I guess, in defense with what we were up against, with, you know, the use being a vehicle-centric use and being on the intersection of two primary vehicle thoroughfares, again, we tried to balance the site design accordingly. The design of the building takes cues from the architecture of the period of the Gateway Motel. We're developing, or Herbst is potentially developing, a similar project at the east end of East Fremont, at Fremont and Eastern there, that kind of shares a similar design. So, the intention was to sort of be that southern gateway and that eastern gateway for the downtown area as well, in that this is a, again, a, you know, with all the improvements going on with Charleston and the widening and improvements going on with Las Vegas Boulevard, we are including the dedicated right-turn lane that was requested by Public Works and also the bus stop on Charleston. So, hopefully, the traffic concerns were engineered to be addressed as part of that improvement project, and we've incorporated accordingly.
Thank you. Okay, I will turn it over to the Commission for discussion. I'll quickly start off by saying, I've had the Historic Preservation Committee, they sent off an email to me saying that they weren't in favor and that they didn't want to see this structure raised. You know, I largely disagree and say I'd like to see something developed there. I would like to see a component of it stay. Maybe it's the sign that's out front. More to that, I've had over a dozen people, my neighbors that live with me in the building, have come up in opposition to me about this, and I've had another dozen asking question, what's going on here? Have they met with the HOA about it? I've had to tell them no. And then, I've had to sit back and think about all their comments and where I sit, because I'm not a big believer in not in my backyard, because we have all the elements in my backyard right now. So, I take that out of the equation. So, is it a right fit for this neighborhood? And, you know, after really deliberating and talking, I talked to the president of the Arts District today, and having a long history in the Arts District, I think I landed a place where I sit with staff on their denial and what the residents have spoken out to me against with all the issues. Some of them you've heard too here tonight in testimony, but a lot of them, I get it in the gym when I'm going through, I get it in the elevator, I get it in the lobby. And we've had other projects in the past where they're very outspoken, and they come and they reach out to me and say, hey, this is something that looks really great for the neighborhood. I'm just hearing the opposite on this development at this moment. So, I can tell you where I'm at to the Commission, as I'm sitting with staff on a recommendation for denial. Commissioner Schlobman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a question for Mr. Pyatt with Public Works. Can you tell me what Public Works, do y'all have plans in the system for more pedestrian-friendly pathways up and down Las Vegas Boulevard in this particular area?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we have a Las Vegas Boulevard beautification project that's under design right now. The right-turn lane that they're showing on their plan is in accordance with what we're planning on constructing, a right-turn pocket, and it's still like, you know, other projects still in the preliminary phase, but looking at wider sidewalks and moving median lighting or lighting to the sides and that type of thing. So, what they're showing, I believe they've already coordinated with our capital improvement project management section, and they're showing what we've asked them to show for Las Vegas Boulevard, and they're, we've conditioned them to dedicate the required right-turn pocket and a big bus shelter there at the intersection to the RTC.
Okay. Well, I mean, this is one of the busier intersections that we have right there on Las Vegas Boulevard and Charleston, and I'm constantly passing through this intersection on daily basis. And, you know, the AMPM, just up one block up the street, every time I'm heading down Charleston, I make sure that I don't get in that far right lane, because it just gets so backed up and congested. I know you have three access points, but that's going to put a lot more, a lot more traffic within that neighborhood, and then plus, just with the traffic coming in and out, you're going to have 10 times amount of, 20 times amount of traffic as compared to any other business up and down Las Vegas Boulevard within that area. You know, and with our Vision, our Vision 24 Downtown Las Vegas Master Plan with the walkability and pedestrian-friendly pathways, having a car wash right here on this corner, I don't think a car wash is what we really need. I've sat on the DDRC, the Downtown Design Review Committee, for years. We have a Las Vegas scenic byway where we're trying to preserve historical neon signs, and, you know, and there's a lot that we've put into Las Vegas Boulevard. I think your building is a beautiful building, and I think the design's nice. I just don't think that the use with everything that's going in there is appropriate, and I think we have a saturation of alcohol within that neighborhood between AMPM and Walgreens and you name it. So, for those reasons, I think the negative components outweigh any benefits that we would see on this. So, I would have to follow staff's recommendations for denial, but-
I see Commissioner Roush's light is on.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to provide a contrarian view, and not a strong one, but just some thoughts and some oversights, because I actually am going to disagree with staff on this one. This is a blighted property. I am so tired of driving by it and how ugly it is. I know it attracts homeless folks. It hasn't been maintained and kept up the way it should, and it's not the proper current use that I want to see as a gateway to downtown. I would love to see new development on this property. I'm afraid to go to the AMPM and get gas, and I've had to many times, and I don't enjoy it. By building something new and having an alternative, that might force them to clean up their act as well and bring in, you know, better operators in the neighborhood and raise the bar, so to speak. I just think that we could have done a little bit more of our harmonious and compatible design. I like the building. I like the contemporary aspects of it. It reminds me a little bit of the new Starbucks across the street that's been done in the new kind of modern mid-mod, I'll call it. I don't know what else to classify it. Currently modern reference to mid-mod. This goes a little too far. It's just a little too harsh. All of the metal components, the dark gray, the black, the red, it's just, I don't know if it's the right statement. It just seems like it's a little bit hard for the area. If there was something that was a little bit more compatible and maybe retro that was maybe something that the neighborhood and the Historic Preservation Society could go along with, I think that might be a better compromise. But again, I'm in favor of growth. I'm in favor of progress. I'm in favor of seeing blighted properties developed. So, I would be in favor of the property tonight. I just would like to see it refined a little bit in terms of its design. That's my statement.
Thanks, Commissioner Roush. And I will add to that. I mean, you heard me say I'd love to see this property redeveloped. I just, I don't think, for me, jumping to this particular application to live with on this corner in the Arts District is, I think it's keeping me at denial. I think that's why, so. Commissioner Schlobman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, based on all the testimony heard tonight, and I just also want to say I'm not against development. Everybody knows that I'm pro-development, especially downtown. I just don't think it's a proper use, and I think with the car wash and a few things, it's just not necessarily overbuilding the site, but putting components on the site that shouldn't be on the site in that particular location. So, for those reasons, on item 53, SUP 75105, I would move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Thank you. Is a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, on item 54, SDR 75106, I'd move to follow staff's recommendations, recommendation for denial.
Is motion on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, those items will move forward and be heard by City Council at the February 6, 2019 City Council meeting.
And I will say, I encourage you to come over to Soho Lofts, the building next door. There's a lobby there and a property manager that's in there, and would love to sit down with you more, you know, because this is going to City Council, and we'd love to have some input there, too, just so-
Certainly. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, actually, it's eight o'clock. We're going to take a quick break. We're going to take a quick break, and we'll be right back. Thank you. Do I know? Okay, it looks like we have a quorum and our city attorney should be back here shortly, but we are gonna get rolling. Item number 55, SUP 75092, applicant owner, HOP LLC, for possible action request for a major amendment to an approved special use permit for proposed 3,781 square foot urban lounge use with 624 square feet of outdoor seating with 17,321 square foot urban lounge with 970 square feet of outdoor seedings was, seating was previously approved at 1310 South 3rd Street, Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to amend a previously approved special use permit to reduce the floor area of an urban lounge. This is approximately a 76 percent reduction, which requires the approval of this major amendment. Staff finds the use to be compatible with the surrounding uses in the area and is recommending approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. And I will disclose that I live just on the outside of the notification area. I don't feel it affects me in a greater or lesser way, so I will be voting on the application tonight.
Chairman Cherry.
Oh, sorry.
I apologize and I do, I must disclose that I am a former owner of the building, partners with the current owner of the building, and this was originally my application. So, I am going to abstain and recuse myself to the rear. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can I get your name and address to record, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. My name's Anna Veverka, V-E-V-E-R-K-A. I live at 1442 White Drive in Las Vegas and I'm here representing the application. As was mentioned, the size has been significantly reduced, but other than that, there have been no changes from the original application and we agree with staff's conditions and hope you will as well.
Thank you. This is noted as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard on this item. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, turn it over to the Commission for discussion. Commissioner Schlobman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just looked at the notification radius and I do own tavern within the notification area, but I'm barely within the notification area. It's not gonna affect me in a greater or lesser than anyone else, so I'll be voting on this matter. I have seen this project, walked this project, think it's a beautiful project. It was previously approved and I think that this is pretty simple and so there's no other questions. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
Please do.
On item 55, SUP 75092, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. Is a motion on the floor? Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on February 6, 2019.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 56, SUP 74899, applicant owner Stephanie J. Youngblood for possible action request for special use permit for proposed short-term residential rental use at 803 South 6th Street, Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to operate a short-term residential rental use that meets all minimum special use permit requirements of Title 1912 that were applicable at the time of application. With the recent adoption of Bill Number 2018-58 amending the Unified Development Code, relief from conditional use regulations by means of a future special use permit no longer exists. If approved, the proposed use would be authorized and subject to non-conforming use provisions of Las Vegas Municipal Code Title 19. If denied, the proposed use would not be authorized. Staff is recommending approval. Please note that there are additional letters of support and protest since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you get your name and address, please, to the record?
My name is Stephanie Youngblood, 500 South Rancho, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thanks.
Okay, so, I appreciate staff's recommendation for approval. I have a historic building south of Charleston with very little residential. I have pictures of my neighbors. This is across, across the street. This building's directly across the street.
Could you, could you turn it the other way?
Good.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay, good. This building's been tagged for a very long time and every night, there's a homeless person that sleeps right in front of the door. There's a bond, bail bond store across the street or business. And I have, the majority of my neighbors have signed my petition in favor of me doing this project. Here's the building. It's, it's a historical building. This is the original linoleum on the floor, original stove. This is the living This is the dining room. This is the basement. It's just a lov, it's a lovely building and I had it up for rental, but the people, the different lawyers or internet businesses that wanted to rent it wanted to denature it and I just couldn't do it. Bust down walls and totally redo it. So, again, it's a historical building and I wanted to keep it historical. I did have a neighborhood meeting. I sent out 320 invites. I have packets for each one of you with my letters of support and the signed positions in favor of. I didn't know there was any opposition as I have, have had overwhelming support. Would, is it okay with the chair if I pass these packets out?
Please, please. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna turn over to the public hearing unless there's anything specifically. Okay, thank you.
I'm good.
This is noted as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard on this item. I have one person coming up. If I can get your name and address to the record.
It's Marissa Harmon, 900 South Las Vegas. I just wanna say I'm for the short-term rental.
And spell your first name for us again one more time.
It's Marissa, M-A-R-I-S-S-A.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing, turn it over to the Commission. I will quickly say I do live within the notification area. I am Marissa's neighbor. Welcome the new baby to the building. And, you know, this, again, you know, the building, we have lots of conversations in the building and where the gas station was one where there was a lot of opposition. This was one where everyone felt comfortable with the application. I will say if it was to the south of Charleston in the neighborhoods, one, you'd probably see a lot of opposition and you probably wouldn't have my support, but seeing where it's at and knowing what's happening in that area very intimately, I will be supporting the application. Commissioner Quinn?
Yeah, thank you through you. I think the nicest thing that comes out of this application, Ms. Youngblood, is that you're keeping it as-is. I mean, how awesome is that, right? And the one thing that you are a staple of in our community is that you're a woman of your word and therefore I will be supporting your project tonight because I know whatever comes out of your mouth is what you're gonna do. Thank you.
Nice words. Commissioner Schlobman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As I've stated in the past and stated again tonight, you know, this little area from Charleston to Fremont, Maryland Parkway down to Las Vegas Boulevard, the Arts District and, you know, maybe even a few other areas, I've really never had a problem with and it's meeting all the distance separations and everything else. So, I think this is a perfect candidate for short-term rental. And so, if there's no other comments, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
On item 56, SUP 74899, would move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Is a motion on the floor? Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. And I am gonna turn over the rest of the agenda to Vice Chair DeSalvio and I'm gonna try to preserve a little bit of my voice for my wife later.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Item number 58, SUP 75033, applicant owner Precision Assets for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed short-term residential rental use at 308 Westerner Avenue, Ward 1 Tarkanian. Staff recommends approval. Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to operate a short-term residential rental use that meets all minimum special use permit requirements of Title 1912 that were applicable at the time of application. With the recent adoption of Bill Number 2018-58 amending the Unified Development Code, relief from conditional use regulations by means of a future special use permit no longer exists. If approved, the proposed use would be authorized and subject to non-conforming use provisions of Las Vegas Municipal Code Title 19. If denied, the proposed use would not be authorized. Staff is recommending approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, Nathan Taylor, 8414 West Farm Road, representing the applicant. I'll be very brief. The next two items are mine, but I just wanted to state that this was, this was an applicant that actually did their due diligence prior to purchasing a property. They called me last year and asked what the rules were. What were the rules? What were the distance restrictions? What were the distance restrictions? Ran through the whole gamut before actually going out and looking for a property. We've seen a lot of investors buy properties before finding out what the city codes are. So this applicant did their due diligence, found a property that met the distance restrictions. Also, I'm happy to say this is a local business owner who has a vested interest in our community, and will do right by the community, and with that, I just ask that you follow staff's recommendations for approval.
This is noticed as a public hearing. Anybody wish to be heard? Please come forward. There's multiple mics.
Excuse me, Mr. Vice Chairman, Chairman. I'm going to have to abstain from this item. I didn't get a chance to get a word in first, but I must abstain. I've had previous business dealings with this representative, and I do have a conflict, and I have bias, so I will not vote. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Jo Graham, and I've lived on Upland Boulevard in the same house for fifty-three years. Most of my neighbors have been there quite as, almost as long. We're, we're two of the youngest ones in the neighborhood, and we're in our seventies. And our neighborhood is primarily retirees who've been there for fifty or more years or school-aged children, and we've had a lot of trouble with renters. My neighbor, three-oh-five, they threw dog poop over her fence, and, and she had to get a new pool pump after they threw it into her pool, and it's just not an appropriate neighborhood for someplace that's going to have a party place, unless they're really respectful of the times for noise and stuff, but we've not had good luck with this, and I just don't think it's an appropriate neighborhood for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
So what we're saying is this, my name is Carol Croce. I'm at three-oh-nine Upland Boulevard, which is immediately adjacent to the Wisteria Project. What we're saying is this is no Nordic accord. You know, this is not a fancy neighborhood. These houses are cracker boxes on a slab. They're very small and very close together, and I'm sure it meets the absolute minimum of your requirements, and that's very well and good, but I understand that zoning regulations are put in place to protect the safety and peace of individuals and neighborhoods and to protect the property value of those mentioned. By mere request to obtain a variance indicates a move to effectively lower those standards. Agreed? Okay. Charleston Heights has gone through a rough patch since the last recession, and it's only recently that we have been able to attract young families willing to raise their children in a neighborhood that is still in recovery in spite of the increase in violent crimes which we are not immune from in our neighborhood. And Mrs. T., Mrs. Tarkanian has helped us out with that a great deal. I see no reason for a short-term rental on Wisteria Street. There are sixty-year-old houses like mine with no significant amenities or access to anything that could be of interest to tourists, and most definitely would not command a premium price. So the question is, who is this for? And is there anything that supports a decision to put a short-term rental property in a neighborhood that is exclusively residential? I heard someone mention that there are businesses that people can have in their home, but they are people who are running their business from their home. This is not that situation. It is also not the situation of Mrs. Youngblood, where she is in a, in a commercial area that is not a strictly residential area. This is strictly residential. Okay. I've had recent experience with squatters with a house next to my client where the company purchased the house fourteen months ago. They've had it for all that time, and it took six or seven months to get the squatters out of it. They've spent sixty thousand dollars remodeling the house, and they have not collected one penny. They have not been able to rent that house for even one day.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I have the applicant come back down, please? Give you a minute for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. We didn't know of any opposition prior to showing up tonight. When the last time I looked online, it showed zero cards come in. I know sometimes at the end, a couple people might be in opposition, but I can represent that this will be a great operator. They will take care of this property. They understand all the rules and regulations related to operating short-term rental. They know that they can't violate noise ordinances. They understand they can't throw parties, so this is what I go through with all of my clients over the past year and a half that applied for these permits, so I can represent that they will do a great job. They will be a great part of the neighborhood. They will manage the property respectfully. They will have a property manager. I believe this is a great applicant that will actually be a positive influence on the neighborhood, and with that, I just ask that you continue to follow staff's recommendations for approval. I would say that we are okay with a six-month administrative review on this, and if there's any problems, obviously, within the six-month review, they will lose their special use permit, and I've explained that to the applicant. Thank you.
What people understand and what people do are two very different things.
Ma'am, ma'am, please.
The public hearing portion's closing. I have to ask you to sit down. The public hearing portion is closing. Thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to the Commission. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Vice Chair DeSalvio. So I stand firm on my, my feelings on all of these. First of all, you meet the six-hundred-and-sixty feet. Second of all, we've had a few neighbors protest, but we haven't had a neighborhood. So therefore, tonight, I'm going to follow staff's recommendation for approval, putting that six-month review on you with, with you know, Nathan, one thing, and, you know, it's gone, right?
Understand, Commissioner.
And you'll follow through. Okay, so with that, my motion is for approval on item number SUP seven-five-zero-three-three, adding a six-month review for any and all violations.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I might, just for staff, so that we can, in the clerk's office, so we can get that condition, if I might, Commissioner Quinn recommend that that condition be a six-month administrative required reviews required following licensure. We want to make sure that it's after they've been licensed.
Thank you, Director. That's exactly what I wanted to say.
And we accept that condition.
All right, with that said, you hear there's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Please post. And that motion carries. Good luck. Item number...
Mr. Vice Chair, my apologies. That item will go forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on February sixth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, next, item number fifty-nine, SUP seven-five-zero-three-eight, applicant owner,
Precision Assets, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed short-term residential rental use at two-two-two-three East Ogden Avenue, Ward Three, Coffin. Staff recommends approval. Can I have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to operate a short-term residential rental use that meets all minimum special use permit requirements of Title nineteen-twelve that were applicable at the time of application. With the recent adoption of Bill number twenty-eighteen-fifty-eight amending the Unified Development Code, relief from conditional use regulations by means of a future special use permit no longer exists. If approved, the proposed use would be authorized and subject to non-conforming use provisions of Las Vegas Municipal Code Title nineteen. If denied, the proposed use would not be authorized. Staff is recommending approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication. Thank you.
Just for the record, please note that Commissioner Rouse is going to abstain on this item.
Yes.
Go ahead. Mr. Vice Chair, Nathan Taylor, eighty-four-fourteen West Farm, representing the applicant. This is the same applicant from the last item, so I will not repeat myself, and I will just respectfully ask that you follow staff's recommendation for approval. Thank you.
This notice is a public hearing. Anybody wish to be heard? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
That's a cute house.
And open it to the Commission.
How cute this house is.
Do you wish to be heard on this item?
Well, the item that was relevant to the homelessness.
No, not yet. We're getting to you.
I'm pouring it on.
All right, I'm going to open it up to the Commission, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, I have reviewed this item and seen as how it meets all the city requirements. I'm ready to make a motion on this. On item number fifty-nine, SUP seven-five-zero-three-eight, move to approve, subject to staff's condition, or subject to conditions, and so move for approval.
The motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. And that passes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good night.
And Mr. Vice Chair, that item will go forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on February sixth, twenty nineteen.
Item number sixty, SUP seven-five-zero-four-four, applicant owner, Valerie Martinet, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed short-term residential rental use at two-one-one-two Mission Peak Circle, Ward One. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to operate a short-term residential rental use that meets all minimum special use permit requirements of Title nineteen-twelve that were applicable at the time of application. With the recent adoption of Bill number twenty-eighteen-fifty-eight amending the Unified Development Code, relief from conditional use regulations by means of a future special use permit no longer exists. If approved, the proposed use would be authorized and subject to non-conforming use provisions of Las Vegas Municipal Code Title nineteen. If denied, the proposed use would not be authorized. Staff is recommending approval. Please note that there are additional letters of support and protest since publication. Thank you.
Please enter your name for the record, please.
Hi there, I'm Valerie Martinet, and I'm at seventy-four ninety-five West Azure Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-three-zero. Okay, great. Well, good evening, Commissioners. Again, my name is Valerie, and I'm the owner of twenty-one-twelve Mission Peak Circle Drive in Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-four-six. I want to thank you for your time and consideration of my request for a short-term rental permit for the address at twenty-one-twelve Mission Peak. I've owned this property for eight years. I was a tenant for three years before ownership, where I persisted relentlessly to own this property because I fell in love with it. I fell in love with the neighborhood and the neighbors and the home. I'm a local business owner. I work with several MDs, dentists, attorneys, and CPAs here in the Las Vegas area, including some of the schools, and the private schools here. My request is born out of a desire to generate income while I travel on business in the Western United States. My plan is to offer the use of my home to people just like me, executive renters who travel on business and do not want to be in the hustle and bustle of the strip or downtown. There's a lot of conventions that happen here in Las Vegas. Not everybody comes here to party, but a lot of people come here to work and attend the venues that we have in this amazing city. I will not rent to large groups. I know that that's not allowed per the permit, but I have no intention of renting to large groups, no events, no spring breakers, no bachelor, bachelorette parties, and I'll have mandatory quiet hours. It's a quiet neighborhood. An additional safeguard that I will be able to put into place is to rent to only those people who are recommended by other short-term rental owners. They, on Airbnb, VRBO, you get to review what the owners say about their guests, and the guests get to review the homes. I will not rent to anybody without a prior recommendation from another owner. I also will not allow instant booking. I don't know if you're familiar with that term, but that is where you can go online, you can click, and you, I'm a frequent Airbnb-er, so when I travel, I usually stay at an Airbnb-type place. So you can instantly book. I will not allow that with my, my guests. This is exactly why I've termed this as an executive rental. It's my, excuse me, I'm recovering from a cold. It's my marketing strategy, and it's based on my investment. The fact that it is my home, I do stay there, I work from home, and the needs of the community, I know that people don't want partying houses. I understand that, and I support that. Nobody wants a partying house in their neighborhood. When my tenant of five years moved out, I refinanced the home to rehab the house to make it livable once again. I brought pictures of the, of the condition of the home when my tenant moved out. I mistakenly, I had a property management company who I thought was looking at the house, and they were not, apparently on the inside. The rent was being paid on time, so I assumed falsely that that meant they were taking care of the home, and like I said, I did bring some pictures. If, if I am granted this approval, then I will do anything additional that the city requires, including a six-month review, a one-year review. I'll maintain open dialogue with my neighbors. They all have my contact information. I reached out to many of the neighbors in my neighborhood, asked them to meet with me. I was here all weekend, last weekend, specifically to meet with my neighbors. Nobody took me up on it.
If I can ask you to just wrap it up?
Yes, yes. I also have the property professionally co-managed by a current short-term rental professional that is known as a super host, as well as a local property management company who could not attend because she was sick tonight. Could I show a couple quick pictures of what the property looked at like before?
Has it already been submitted in the packet, or is this something new?
I just brought it today.
All right, go ahead, real quick, please.
Is that set up? Yes. I'm just going to show you some of the conditions, why I no longer want to rent to a long-term renter. So this is the condition of the property. I don't know if you can see that very well. You can see blinds torn down, sheets put up, a close-up of the blinds, the condition of the filth that was left, spaghetti on the ceilings. This is when my tenant moved out. She had to have a dumpster, and you can see how full the dumpster is to remove all the refuse she had in my home.
All right, thank you.
This is what the front yard looks like now.
Thank you.
And the interior, and these are just a few of the pictures. So I thank you so much for your time, and I ask for you to move forward with the staff's recommendation of approval. Thank you so much.
Okay, if you could just step back for a second, and open us up for a public hearing. If anybody wishes to be heard, please. We have three mics, and just tell me your name, address, and if you're for or against, please.
My name's...
And I'll give each of you one minute. Please start the timer. Thank you.
My name's Tom Northhouse. I live at twenty-one-sixteen Mission Peak Circle, right next door to the applicant, and I am opposed to this. I do have a petition. We, the homeowners, Mission Peak Circle, oppose the licensing of the short-term rental belonging to Mrs. Martinet. She lives in California, and she has not been active in the past taking care of her property. Also, we live in a cul-de-sac, and I got pictures. Her tree is in, coming over into my property. I addressed the issue. She didn't take care, take care of it at all, but the tree roots are coming in. She just showed you this picture. It shows that the tree branches are coming out into the curb, and it's a mess. Another evidence showing she does not take care of the property. Here is the tree root coming underneath my, into my grass underneath my decorative curb. I addressed the issue in July. She still hasn't taken care of the tree roots. This is a vine coming over the wall. She didn't take care of it. I said the vine will poison our dogs. She hasn't taken care of that issue. This is the back wall. The water's coming through her property into the back wall, with this tree here is, is kicking up the neighbors on the other side of her, cracking it.
Tom, Tom, thank you. I got it. I got it, buddy. Next, please.
Thank you.
There's three mics, you guys, and if you're getting up for the...
Homeless.
Homeless, sir, this is still a wrong agenda item.
Who's this?
I'll, I'll call you up when it's that one, okay? I got you. Next, please. Three mics, guys.
Good evening. Andrea Roter, R-O-T-E-R. I live at two-one-one-seven Mission Peak, across the street, one over. I am opposed to this. I do not want short-term rentals in my, in my eighteen-house properties. I, I think that it's unnecessary. We don't need it. We're a very tight community of eighteen houses. We have our own little community there, and I just don't think it's necessary. We don't need it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Sherry Olman, twenty-one-oh-five Mission Peak Circle, O-L-L-M-A-N. I've known Valerie for seven or eight years. She's only lived in the house for about two and a half years. She rented the house to Jackie for the last five. She moved out, Jackie moved out at the end of June twenty-eighteen. Valerie hasn't lived in the house since before Jackie and the previous renters, Wes and Brady, or Brandy. She's claiming that she's lived in the house recently. She's only had the opportunity to do so to renovate it once Jackie and her family moved out in the end of June. The house was just dirty. There wasn't anything really broken. The blinds that the pictures were, they were broken, and the renter asked to have them fixed many times. There's many inconsistencies in what Valerie says and what she actually does. She used Jackie's multiple times to act like Valerie was living in the house, to refinance the house, to get what she needed out of it. Valerie's trying to make money out of our family neighborhood community. She's looking out for herself and doesn't care about what happens to our community. We've had many issues with different things happening, and she hasn't corrected it, such as Tom and the neighbors on either side. I'm just across the street, and I oppose this short-term rental use.
Thank you, Ms. Olman. Next, please.
My name is Rayner Schepke. I live at 2117 Mission Peak Circle.
I didn't catch your name. Say it again.
Rayner Schepke, S-C-H-E-P-P-K-E. I'm at 2117 Mission Peak Circle and I'm one of the few original owners in there. Been there 25 years. Right from the beginning, when I bought into that neighborhood, our little street there, we formed a neighborhood watch and it's always been pretty effective as far as, we've got a lot of senior citizens now. We're retired, we're retiring, and we kind of keep track of comings and goings. This is only going to make it harder for us and I recommend denial.
Thank you, Ms. Schepke. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Westenee Holmes. I'm probably the youngest member, have only been there a month. Had I known this was going on, I would have bought something elsewhere, but I'm in the middle of it. I can see a problem with short-term rentals because we are in a cul-de-sac, like you said. They are going to have to come, we're going to be more traffic, they're going to have to come in and turn around, either going or coming, no matter what. Like she said, most of us are seniors and retired and we'd like a quiet, nice community. I mean, I oppose it.
Thank you. Next, please.
Today, I want to thank all you commissioners and the city attorney for your time and effort. I'm a retired Vietnam veteran.
Name for the record, please.
Hi.
Sir.
My name is Arnold Holmes and I'm a retired Vietnam veteran. I oppose this for the short-term rental. I just retired and I bought a home there. If I'd known earlier, I wouldn't have bought that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, please.
Yes, my name is Carol Dimitrov, D-I-M-I-T-R-O-V. I live at 2108 Mission Peak Circle. I'm the next-door neighbor. I was the one with the wall problem. I submitted this packet to you, so you should all have that information and you will notice just lots of inconsistencies just in the letter that Valerie had sent to the City of Las Vegas Planning Commission stating that the property was owner-occupied, which it had not been at the time. This is addressed dated 6/18. Then she also states that she's been renting it out for the last seven years while she's stating also that it's owner-occupied. She also states that she's not going to be renting the property more than, less than three days and more than seven, yet on January 1st, she actually started renting to a client and is going to be renting that property until the end of March. Also, the next-door neighbor who was the previous tenant, Jackie, who you've heard of before, had numerous electrical problems in the house that she had to have repaired. She was also told she needed to leave the property early.
I need you to wrap it up. I need to wrap it up.
Yes. She needed to leave the property that, to basically, so she could have the appraisers come and see that the property was owner-occupied by Valerie when she was not living there to get the mortgage. There is a copy of her mortgage agreement, Section 6, which states that it needs to be owner-occupied. She needs to live in that property for at least in 60 days and one year after.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Christina Alderman. I am also a short-term renter-owner from Portland, Oregon, and I'm just here to support her application, just because I've done this for over two and a half years. I know how the system works on Airbnb, VRBO. There are, where you can set tools on these sites where you have to have recommendations, you can deny people from staying there if you don't like the way that you, the vibe you get from them, or if they have bad reviews, or you could put, like I said, age limits, you can put no partyings, you can have car limits, you can have adults, no kids, pets, what have you. And Valerie, being an upstanding citizen, I believe that she has the very best interest in upholding her unit to all the standards that are required. And I think she has had very good relationships with her neighbors as of, maybe not what you're hearing here tonight, but, so I am for this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Name for the record, please, and if you're for or against.
Hi there, my name's Bruce Hamburg. And the short-term rental thing, I always thought that it's like a party house and stuff, but I come to think again that if you rent a house out to somebody short-term, you have a bad tenant, then at least they move out in 30 days, you know? So I'm going to, I come here for other agendas that you guys passed down until the 20 seconds. I want to turn my cards and I'm going to support this one, okay?
All right, anybody else for a public comment? Seeing none. Ms. Benet, I'll give you one minute to rebuttal, please.
Sure. Thank you. I just want to address one thing right off the bat as far as the tenant that's in there now. Because this has been an ongoing process, the laws have changed, I have not gotten this permit yet. I do have a lease. This is not a client, this is a lease that I have that's signed. Here's a copy of my lease agreement right here. It's a three-month rental, which is outside the short-term rental. I can rent anytime, so that has no bearing on anything. I, of course, have not been owner-occupied. I refinanced on July 11th. The tenant moved out on June 30th. Since then, my primary residence is here in Las Vegas. I also have another property that I stay at in preparation for this. I'm really stunned, these people, I have always considered friends, one of them went to my wedding. Three of them, I've had one-on-one conversations with, Valentino, who didn't stand.
Please address the chair. Please address the chair.
Okay. Hugged me and told me he endorses me doing this. That's why he didn't come up to the mic, I'm sure. I didn't, I didn't know that there was opposition here.
Please wrap it.
And I asked them all to meet with me this weekend. Not one of them responded. I'd like to have a copy of what the petition was. I, I'm just was surprised tonight. And this is only five households. Many of these people live in the same household.
Okay.
Out of 18 in the cul-de-sac.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much.
I'm going to turn it over now to the commission, please.
Ms. Martinez, you can stay at the, I'm sorry, what is it? Martin?
It's Martine, like Cabernet.
Yeah, Cabernet, but Martine. Okay, you can stay right there because I'm going to be very brief. So, I don't know if you know this, but I've been up here 11, over 11 years. And we were all quite astounded when we saw that you had 31 supports. I mean, that's outrageous, right? But as I'm going through them, I'm wondering, why in the heck does Mr. Kip care when he lives in Illinois? And why in the heck does, excuse me, this is so disrespectful. Why does Mrs. Carroll care when she lives in Tennessee? And why in the hell does Mr. Ramos care when he only lives in Arizona? And then we've got one from Rumson, New Jersey. Let me, I mean, I'm going to get fired, I could talk so long. Portland, Oregon, Connecticut. Why in God's name would you take the clerk's time and send in 31 of these, all from out of state, to act like these are your neighbors supporting you? Shame on you, okay? Shame on you. This is as disrespectful as I've ever seen. But I will tell you this, before I make my motion, Mr. Holmes, I thank you for your service as a vet tonight. That's the only good thing that came out of this application. But we have 31 of your, sent in that these support you. Nobody lives in Las Vegas, Nevada. Therefore, my recommendation this evening for item SUP 75044 is for denial and I hope it's final action. This is an atrocity.
You all heard the motion. Please cast your vote.
Ma'am?
No, ma'am. Done.
Please post.
Here they are.
Mr. Vice Chair, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 61, SUP 75150, Appiganona Ana Ortega, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed short-term residential use rental at 8900 Conditie Court, Ward 2, Sorocas. Staff recommends approval. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to operate a short-term residential rental use that meets all minimum special use permit requirements of Title 1912 that were applicable at the time of application. With the recent adoption of Bill Number 2018-58, amending the Unified Development Code, relief from conditional use regulations by means of a future special use permit no longer exists. If approved, the proposed use would be authorized and subject to nonconforming use provisions of Las Vegas Admissible Code Title 19. If denied, the proposed use would not be authorized. Staff is recommending approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Deputy Planning Director Mary McElhone for additional information pertaining to this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Code Enforcement currently has an active case on this location since September of 2017 and a notice and order was issued September 21st, 2017. Since that time, we've had a lot of evidence that the, they have been renting for 30 days or more. However, more recently, Code Enforcement received a complaint on the hotline and this was January 5th of 2019, just last weekend. Our Code Enforcement officers were able to verify that an eight-date booking was actually on the calendar. U-House has confirmed that there is actually one active listing out there with a minimum night stay of eight nights. Thank you.
Will the applicant please state your name for the record?
Ana Ortega and property is 8900 Conditie Court.
I couldn't hear you. Please.
Ana Ortega. A-N-A, just one N. And yes, I would like to request for this SUP permit and I'm here to answer.
Can you, I'm hard of hearing already.
Yes, I would like to request this SUP permit for this property. Yeah, I'm sorry, English is my second language. I'm sorry, but.
Can you explain the issues with Code Enforcement for us, please?
Yes, I've been renting the house, but now I want to have the SUP permit to rent it short-term. I was not aware of the, how the, yeah, I was not aware of how the rental was until now.
Is that it? Are you good? This is a public comment, a public hearing? Does anybody have any comments they wish to make? Please come out, please step back, ma'am, let them have their moment. Thank you. Please state your name for the record, tell me if you're for or against. Thank you.
My name is Guy Dudley. I live at 1625 Odette Lane and I oppose this. Can, can we get this map brought up that I put on the podium? Okay, on this map, the house we're talking about is right here on the corner. This is a cul-de-sac. There are 12 homes on that cul-de-sac. The applicant does have an open Airbnb listing right now. The website does not list the cost to rent the home for 30 days. It only lists it, and I'll slip this over there for a moment, it lists it for $139 a night, but nowhere in there does it say if you want to rent those for 30 days, it's going to cost you this much. This house has been a disturbance in this neighborhood now for quite a while. The first listings appeared on Airbnb in 2015 and I'll step away.
Thank you very much. Please state your name for the record.
Shelley Wormdahl, 1548 Odette Lane. We are, we, our house backs, the side of our house backs up to their back of their house. There has been quite a few occasions where there's very loud noises and parties and just carrying on. And one time, there was like two big vans, passenger vans, and at least 20 kids pulled out of there and they were staying there. So just, it's very noisy and very disruptive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name for the record and if you're for or against.
Yes, Jose Duran. I'm at 1613 Odette. If you pull up the map, I'm actually house number four. And then my neighbor Chuck, who lives at 1617, cannot make it because of health reasons and he did send a letter. I think it was already recorded with the clerk. And, you know, it's just very disruptive. This has been going on. I've been living in the neighborhood now for two years and it's just constant coming and going from people from the house and it's just very disruptive to the neighborhood. I'm one of the youngest people in the neighborhood. Everybody's retired, everybody's been in the houses for a long time and I just want to see the neighborhood, you know, stay intact, stay peaceful, stay quiet. And as a matter of fact, just this past week, the trash was out for six days because they put out the trash. Whoever comes out and cleans the house sets the trash out and just, whenever they pick it up, they pick it up. Thank you. And I oppose. Just, thank you.
Thank you. Name for the record, please.
Joy Monday, 1541 Odette. And I opposed.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'll close the public hearing, open it up to the commission. Commissioner Ralph? Oh, you're right. Do you have any closing statement?
No, I'm sorry. I was not aware of those complaints.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up to the commission, close the public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman. This is always a difficult thing to explain in the nicest of ways. I think that it's important that applicants be able to comprehend and understand what's required of them. And I think it's important that if you're even trying to operate a short-term rental, that you make an effort to comply with the local laws and to be a good neighbor. And I just don't see that happening here. I think with all due respect, maybe you're in a little bit over your head and obviously that's reflected by the neighbors' comments. And so, due to the number of complaints that I've had, received personally, also through the councilman's office and the folks that are here tonight, clearly, it's not a compatible use. The neighborhood is unhappy. There have been infractions according to Code Enforcement and I'm unfortunately going to have to make a motion for denial tonight. So that will be my motion if there's no other comments from any of my fellow commissioners.
Okay, you heard it. Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. And that has passed.
And that item will go forward to city council and be heard as a part of their agenda on February 6, 2019.
Next up, item number 62, under Director's Business, a text amendment for 74700, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to amend LVMC Title 19.12, permissible use and 19.18. Definition and measures related to the beer and wine cooler, on and off-sale, and beer and wine cooler off-sale establishments used to provide for other related matters. Staff has no recommendation. Staff report, please.
Mr. Vice Chairman, this text amendment would amend the beer-wine cooler off-sale and beer-wine cooler on and off-sale uses and definitions to allow alcoholic beverage service with an ancillary brew pub to be operated without food service or other associated retail requirements. Additional changes to the business licensing requirements of Title 6 would also be made to accommodate these changes to Title 19. The changes would allow the operation of a brew pub in compliance with NRS 597 requirements. Staff has no recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Application, applicant, please.
Yes, public here.
Public comment? Is it now open? Go for it.
Thank you. My name is Wendy Forrest, F-O-R-R-E-S-T. My residence is at 1579 Alpine Hills Avenue, Henderson, Nevada, 89014. Mr. Chairman and commissioners, thank you for hearing us tonight. I am co-owner and founder of Craft House Brewery in Henderson, Nevada, and I currently own or hold a brew pub license from the state of Nevada. So this is how it affects our business. We wish to expand our footprint to the arts district downtown Las Vegas. We want to offer our locally handcrafted beer to a larger market outside of Henderson. In doing so, we're opening up the secondary tasting room. I've previously met with Councilman Coffin and he's in support of this amendment as well. When guests are visiting tasting rooms in other cities, they like to take home a piece of the brewery and the handcrafted, locally-made craft beer that's made right here in their town. We wish to sell our own products that are manufactured here locally. We're not selling anybody else's products to go. So this would be an addition to the license. Currently, the beer-wine room license does not allow for the beer-wine cooler off-sale. Our intentions are to sell in non-single-serve containers, so somebody can't take a single-serve container and walk outside with it. This is for growler fills and for six-packs and four-packs to go and to take home and to be enjoyed at home. We would like to point out this amendment would serve as a catalyst to bring our local craft beer industry on par with the rest of the nation and we would like requests for approval on the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please. State your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Robert Snyder. I'm the chief financial officer for Big Dogs Brewing Company. I live at 11474 Castor Street in Las Vegas. Big Dogs has operated in the city of Las Vegas for 30, over 30 years and we wish to expand as well to the downtown area and we're in support of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, I will close public comment, open it up to the commission.
Chairman, Vice Chair, now Chairman DeSalvio, I tried very diligently to abstain earlier so I wouldn't have to sit and listen to the entire testimony, but I must abstain because I, myself and my family members, own a brewery, Teneque Brewery at A three-one Bonanza, so I am respectfully abstaining.
Thank you. Chairman Cherry?
I just quickly wanted to say I will be supporting it. I think the testimony we heard, there are nationwide other communities where this would be as consistent with that. This is something I will be supporting.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, I didn't know Mr. Snyder was going to be here tonight from Big Dogs, but I was trying to remember where I, trying to figure out where I met you, and I, it's all coming back to me. You know, not having this ordinance killed one of the projects that you wanted to build a few years ago, and this one come to, your project come to mind when I was reading this, so, and it killed quite a few other projects not having this, so this is going to help out downtown, a lot of other places, and I think it's good, and I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, on item sixty-two, TXT seven four seven zero zero, move to approve.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. Please post, and that passes.
And, Mr. Vice Chair, that item will move forward to city council in ordinance form for their consideration.
Okay, item number sixty-three, TXT seven three nine seven two, application owner, City of Las Vegas, for a possible action for a request to amend LVMC Title nineteen point one-two permissible use and nineteen point one-eight definitions and measures to add social use venue as a new marijuana-related use permissible by means of a special use permit and to provide for others related thereto. Staff has no recommendation. Staff report.
Mr. Vice Chairman, the text amendment would amend Title nineteen to add a new social use venue use as a permissible use, approvable by means of a special use permit in commercial, C one and C two, and industrial, CM and Amazon districts, with appropriate non-wavable requirements related to distance to protected uses, limited public access, adherence to Title six provisions, and limit on abandonment period. It would align the use with the requirements of Title six for business licensing provisions being considered by the city council. Staff has no recommendation.
Through you, Vice Chair, I will be abstaining from this item, being that my family's in the cannabis business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman.
This is, notice this is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to be heard? Not yet. Anybody wish to be heard?
We're all getting you, though.
See, none, I'll close the, I'm trying to get to you, buddy. Close the public hearing and open it up for the commission, commissioners.
Yes, Vice Chairman, I guess a question for staff. Are there any restrictions as far as where this can go, not on Fremont Street or underneath the Fremont Street Experience, or is it pretty much a free-for-all throughout the city as long as you hit, I mean, as long as you miss all the distance separations?
Mr. Vice Chair, through you to Commissioner Schlotman. At this point in time, there are no restricted areas within the boundaries of the city of Las Vegas, as long as they meet all the distance requirements.
However, Mr. Vice Chair, through you, I do want to be clear, this only affects the permissible use table in nineteen, table nineteen twelve. It does not affect permissible use tables in Summerlin, Town Center, or any other special area plan that has a separate land use table. So, at this time, this would not affect Town Center, Summerlin, Providence, things like that.
Okay, and another question for staff, is there going to be additional building safety requirements such as filtration of the air and things of the sort, that way, when people are, visitors are walking down Fremont Street in the Fremont Street Experience, we're not just throwing out a whole bunch of smoke and making it smell like walking down the streets of Seattle?
Downtown Denver.
Commissioner Schlotman, for the record, Mary McElhone, Deputy Planning Director. So, there's quite a few things in Title six that will be required as part of the licensing process. First of all, just so you know, the way it's currently drafted is that you cannot smoke outdoors, so this is expected to be in a interior commercial location, and there are air quality plans that will have to be submitted. Part of those air quality plans, it has to remove the THC compounds to protect employees from the effects of the secondhand smoke. There's also a fire safety plan that needs to be approved by our fire department for the safety of employees, patrons, and the public, and there's a list of other requirements that they will also have to follow.
Okay, and one last question. Are the distance separation requirements wavable or non-wavable?
Mr. Vice Chairman, through you, the separation distances are non-wavable, and they're similar to what's required for a dispensary.
Okay, so, even though we see a lot of, and through you, Mr. Vice Chair, even though we see a lot of taverns and tavern limited, not tavern limited, but taverns and gaming establishments come to Fremont, the Fremont Street Experience, and I hate to keep bringing up the Fremont Street Experience, but it's just a good example. However, we waive the distance separation from churches and parks and things of this sort quite often, just because it is Fremont, but this would not be wavable, so I would think that this would, you know, prohibit a lot of places from opening on, directly on Fremont Street.
Mr. Vice Chairman, through you, that is correct. There's no provision for waiving those distance separations.
Perfect, thank you. No further questions?
Through you, Vice Chairman, I have just two comments. So, the text amendment says the applicant is the owner of the city of Las Vegas. I find it extremely strange that Town Center and Summerlin and all these places don't fall under the text amendment we're talking about tonight. Is that safe in saying that?
Through you, Mr. Vice Chair, that is correct. Those areas do not apply. The sponsor of the proposed amendment is, at this time, only looking at the bulk of, well, not just downtown, actually, the bulk of the city is governed by Title nineteen twelve uses. It's essentially only special area plans, such as the Town Center area, Providence, Summerlin, which have their own designated use tables as a part of their development agreements or their adopting language.
Right.
So, at this time, it's only within those areas of the city that don't have a special area plan. If at some time, a councilperson wishes to include this use in Town Center, that's happened quite a bit, actually, where changes happen to Title nineteen twelve, and then later, someone wants to do something in, say, Town Center, and they come forward. Similarly, we've updated the use table in Summerlin on a much rarer occasion, because the Summerlin HOA Oversight Group there very seldom adds new uses to their use table. They feel very confident in what they originally approved, but even occasionally there, they do update their use table with uses as the city evolves our use provisions.
Thank you, Director. And the other thing I wanted to say is, you know, as a, somebody that is a proponent of marijuana for medical reasons and for recreational reasons, I believe that we've given enough. I mean, you know, you can smoke it in your house, you can smoke it at your friends, you can smoke it in a three hundred feet away from a dance studio, you can smoke it three hundred feet, eight hundred feet away from a bar, whatever it is, enough is enough. I don't think we need to paint and smoke pot. I don't think we need to pot and paint or whatever these places are. I feel that we have given everybody enough places to smoke pot, and therefore, I will not be supporting this text amendment.
Commissioner Roush?
Thank you, Chairman. I agree with Commissioner Quinn. I also agree with Commissioner Schlotman. This is a very difficult subject, because I think that it's important that we view it for what it is. It's a privileged license to me. It's just like asking for gaming, it's just like asking for liquor. I just feel that we are not far along enough yet with our understanding of the whole marijuana process. We have a lot to learn. My husband passed away from cancer. I was in favor of medical marijuana for him. It wasn't available at the time. He was a banker, and he was too proud to get, you know, alternative treatments, and had it been available now, I'd be very much in support of continued medical marijuana. I think that recreational marijuana is a completely different animal, and I think when you pair that with alcohol, we're asking for trouble. That's just how I feel. I think that it is a corruption to our neighborhoods, and I think what people do in the privacy of their own home is their business, but I think that it's our job to protect neighborhoods, to protect areas around schools, to protect areas for future development where people want to develop and not have some sort of a undesirable effect or unintended consequence of odors, behaviors, and attitudes that surround this. And for those reasons, I am just not in favor of this. I do not think that marijuana should be coupled with alcohol in a lounge type or any other type of environment. I think it should be its own, its own approval, and it should have its own special separations. I will not vote in favor tonight.
Commissioner Roush, is that in the form of a motion?
I would be happy to make a motion for denial of item number sixty-three, TXT seven three nine seven two. Thank you.
You've all heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Mr. Vice Chair, so ordinarily, I would say this will go forward to city council in ordinance form. However, this is already at city council in ordinance form, and will be at recommending committee on Monday, January sixteen fourteen, Monday the fourteenth, I believe, for its formal public hearing on the entire package, which includes the licensing elements that Mary identified, as well as these land use considerations.
Thank you. Moving on to item number sixty-four, TXT seven four eight four seven, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for a possible action on a request to amend the provisions of LVMC Chapter nineteen point twelve related to the distance separation requirements for a nightclub and liquor establishment tavern use and to provide for other related matters. Staff has no recommendation. Staff report, please.
Mr. Vice Chairman, this text amendment would provide an additional circumstance under which waivers of the required distance separation between two taverns, a tavern in protected uses or a nightclub in protected uses could be approved for establishments with a tavern restricted license along Sahara Avenue between Valley View Boulevard and Rainbow Boulevard. The tavern restricted license would be created through a concurrent amendment of LVMC Title six. The tavern restricted license category would be added to both the conditional use regulations and minimum special use requirements as an available business license type for alcohol beverage sales in conjunction with a nightclub. In addition, a reference to childcare facility in the conditional use regulations for nightclub use would be changed to the current use category of individual care facility. This is a cleanup of a term that is no longer used in Title nineteen. Staff has no recommendation.
Okay, this is, notice this is a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to the commission. Commissioner Roush?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman DeSalvio. I would like if staff could please explain in layman's terms what the application really is, for the record, so that our viewing public can understand as well, because we ran through it pretty fast, and I can't follow along, so if I can't, and I have a pretty low standard.
If you can't, I really can, Roush.
Mr. Vice Chair, to you, through you, to Commissioner Roush. So, basically, what this bill does is, it's a new, is going to be a new license, and it's going to be a similar situation with our tavern limited license that we have down there on, in certain areas on East Fremont Street. It's going to bring that same model of a license for liquor. It's going to run along Sahara Avenue from Valley View Boulevard to Rainbow Boulevard. Restricted gaming is not going to be allowed. It's going to be on-premise sale, alcohol only. Ours' operation right now are from six AM to two AM. All the activity has to happen within the interior of the establishment, so no outdoor use. And minors have to be, if there's a presence of minors, they have to be within the designated restaurant area between the hours of six AM and ten PM only. The other thing that this does is it also allows waivers between two taverns in this area, and also taverns or, you know, the nightclubs will also be allowed waivers from those protected uses, which is churches, schools, care facilities, or city parks.
Okay, so, I have to wrap my brain around this and respond and say, you're telling me that the, the person who sponsored this bill wants there to be wall-to-wall bars and nightclubs from Rainbow Boulevard to Valley View? Is that what you're telling me?
There is a bill sponsor, and that is, I wouldn't say that they want wall-to-wall, but...
She would like people the opportunity to ask for that type of entertainment. Sahara is a unique development pattern with heavy commercial along Sahara and very close residential and other uses behind it, and that has precluded a number of operators from going, asking in that area for a business. Again, these will be special use permits, so they will still have the discretionary review of this board to make a recommendation and/or final action, and then ultimately, city council to make a decision on each individual application, whether or not the waivers that would be required are appropriate or not. But it is to provide an ability for an applicant to ask and prove themselves that they, to the planning commission and to the city council, that they can operate in a way that is, in fact, harmonious, compatible, even with those distance issues. And that, that's the ask of the sponsor of this bill.
Okay, and I'm not going to say that I know what the sponsor was thinking, but I would presume that it's something along the lines of economic redevelopment and trying to eliminate blight and trying to bring more businesses, but I'm not sure that this is the right way to do it. It's very far-reaching. It's a very long stretch of road there, from Valley View to Rainbow, and I think that what's going to happen is you're going to see a lot of folks that are going to come in and flood us with applications for this, and I think that it's going to, in a lot of ways, destroy the character in the neighborhood. So, my, my very strong feeling is that this is not what we probably intended when we approved Fremont Street East. That was to try to be more of a tourist corridor, and I think there's other ways and better ways of creating economic redevelopment than, than throwing the doors open and letting other people put up a bar anywhere they want, adjacent to any bar, adjacent to a school, adjacent to a house of worship. It's just, it's incompatible with the whole Clark County zoning code. It's incompatible with the city of Las Vegas. It's not harmonious, in my view, and I'm not supporting it.
I have a question. So, we had the tavern limited, which we have right now, and that functions in the downtown corridor, and I think in a business I was involved in, we had one of those. This, this is called a tavern restricted. There's other licenses that could come in on this corridor correctly, that, like, a supper club license or an alcohol use associated with a restaurant that might not, that might have distance separation requirements? Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, for the record, Mary McElhone, yes. So, we have a beer-wine room license that really doesn't require a restaurant. That can go into any of these establishments. We also have a restaurant with alcohol license, and besides the regular tavern licenses, we do, of course, those do have the distance separation. So, there are other liquor licenses that are available in this, in this corridor. The challenge here is full liquor with a meal or having another tavern too close.
I understand, and, and, I mean, I hear Commissioner Roush's concerns, and I will say, my comfort level lies with, it's a, it's an SUP still, right? It would still come before us, and we'd still go through the process, and I, I think that's where I, I will land with support on the application myself.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, I understand Commissioner Roush, you know, and, and your concerns and also the chairman's concerns, and, you know, creating a tavern restricted is going to allow additional, I mean, it's going to allow another opportunity to, for somebody to come in that can't get the tavern license, that can't get the beer-wine room, and the beer-wine room doesn't allow any hard liquor, and, and then, you know, what is it, alcohol with a, with, with a restaurant, a restaurant with alcohol sales. You know, I've run into this issue before on other places where, you know, they wanted to serve food, but they didn't have enough seat, wanted to serve food in conjunction with alcohol, and these were really good operators that have other locations in town that are very reputable, but they didn't have enough seats, and so then they didn't fall in any category, and then, so therefore, they, they pretty much pulled out of Ward One and just said, well, we can't operate in Ward One. So, I don't necessarily have as big of an issue with the tavern restricted, because it's given another opportunity for people to get out there, and not given them the right specifically to go ahead and just be able to open, because they'll still have to come back before the planning commission, possibly city council, to see if it's appropriate, and if we see saturation, we can start denying some of these applications. The bigger issue that I have, which we can't address in this text amendment tonight, is the whole nightclub, you know, rules and regulations, and this whole, I mean... And this whole, I mean, this is basically based on the nightclub. Everybody's a nightclub now. If you dance in an establishment, how many square feet does it now? Through the vice chair, can I ask staff or...
I'm going to point to my deputy director.
Yeah, Commissioner Schlatman, Mary McElhone. Basically, we did remove that recently from the code, so we no longer have a square footage. We have a new definition of the nightclub. Part of that definition is your main activity happens after dark, and there's quite a, some other wording that goes along with that.
Okay, and Vice Chair, I won't go on too long, but I think this is kind of important, because, guess what? There's going to be activity that goes on after dark at an urban lounge, at my urban lounge, which is dancing or having fun, you know, at any place up and down Fremont Street, the Downtown Cocktail Room, the Griffin, Chairman Charity's establishment when he's open, all up and down the Main Street, the Arts District. I mean, there's going to be entertainment going on. I do not understand at all why we have this nightclub license. I think the city of Las Vegas has the ability to regulate if there's too much noise, if it's a, if they, if there's bans outside, if there's not bans outside, is there residential in the neighborhood, is there not residential in the neighborhood? And we don't need another nightclub license to tell us what we can and can't do. If you can hear, I mean, we have a noise ordinance that tells us what we can and can't do. And, you know, and I think our noise ordinance has enough teeth where code enforcement can go after all of us bar owners and operators, and without all the additional regulations that we're putting on the operators here in the city of Las Vegas. So that's a bigger subject. I think that this is allowing, you know, additional operators to come into this area with a little bit more ease, but I have a significant, like, issues with that, with the whole nightclub, along with every other operator in town.
I just have one question for Mary. Did you, did I hear you say that it also does away with the distance separation that would affect churches and schools?
Commissioner DeSalvio, basically what it does is it allows a waiver from the protected uses of churches, schools, individual care facilities, or city parks. So it allows a waiver from those protected uses, and residential as well.
So what, I guess my concern would be, what if you have in the same shopping complex as somebody who wants to do this proposed bar, and you have a daycare or something in that parking lot? Does that now, these people could walk in and ask for a waiver within just a few hundred feet of a bunch of children?
Yes.
I couldn't support this then, just for that reason. Just can't do it. So, Commissioner Townsend?
Actually, this gives me a lot of heartburn, because I don't think we fully understand what we're doing here, and since I personally don't understand the full context of this, I can't support it. It's probably a good amendment, I don't know, but I don't understand it well enough, and I don't think it's not, it's not staff's fault, I don't think it's explained enough to us to be, really make a valued judgment, so I won't be supporting this tonight.
Thank you. Through you, Vice Chairman, it's obvious that Mayor Pro Temp is, I believe, the person that wrote this, and we all know the one thing about her is that her heart is always in the right place, at the right time, for the right people, for the right business. And I just think that there's something missing here, and I don't, I don't know if we can hold this, but I feel that it needs a little bit more work, because there is no way she would put any family, or business, or anything in harm's way, and I think that this appears to be lessening restrictions on, say, distance separations and different things, and I know my heart tells me that is not her intention with this. So something's wrong, and therefore, I personally am going to abstain on it unless, if we can hold it.
So, Mr. Vice Chair, if I can, I just want to be very clear. It does not change any distance separation. It does not lessen any restriction. If anything, it actually provides this commission and the City Council additional discretion, where the code right now gives you no discretion to look at an applicant and to look at a particular site and say, okay, I see why this is actually, it fits here, even though technically it's not meeting a distance separation. Right now, in the case of a tavern, you don't have that discretion. It's a hard rule. If it doesn't meet, I can't accept the application, even to put it before you, for you to have that conversation about whether it's appropriate or not. So this does not lessen any of those restrictions. It simply gives discretion to the Planning Commission and to the City Council for an applicant to say, hey, I think I have a case for why I should be able to do a tavern activity, in this case, without gaming, on Sahara, even though there's technically a residential neighborhood that's on the backside of the parking lot, on the backside of the shopping center I want to locate. So it really is about providing this body and the City Council discretion to hear those cases where, right now, they cannot.
I think that's a better explanation than I've heard, but it does allow for waivers, and...
And that's your discretion.
And that's the discretion. I'm perplexed.
Has anybody wishing to entertain a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion for denial. We'll see where it goes. You know, my feelings are still very strong about this, and I think we have enough provisions already in the code to restrict alcohol uses, so I don't want to muddy the waters with another one. I'm going to propose that item number sixty-four, TXT seven-four-eight-seven-four, is denied.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. Please post. And that motion carries. Item number sixty-five.
Mr. Vice Chair, so that item will go forward for the sponsor to review. We'll make sure that she hears the comments this evening, and potentially, we'll move forward to City Council in ordinance form for their consideration.
Thank you. Item number sixty-five, TXT seven-five-two-nine-zero, applicant owner city of Las Vegas for a possible action on a request to amend LVMC nineteen, Appendix F, interim downtown Las Vegas development standards, to amend fences and wall standards within the DTLV dash zero downtown Las Vegas overlay district, and to provide for other related matters. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Vice Chairman, this amendment introduces wall and fence requirements that would limit the maximum height of walls between the primary structure and the front property line to a maximum five feet, would limit the solid portion of any such wall or fence to a maximum height of two feet, would clarify what constitutes a solid wall or fence, and would accommodate an increased wall and/or fence height for the purpose of satisfying screening requirements for commercial and industrial site planning. Staff finds that the amendment provides a balance between the need for allowing walls and fences and the fostering of a pleasant environment within downtown neighborhoods and is recommending approval.
This is a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to the commissioners.
I just have a question for staff. There used to be at one time, and maybe there still is, maybe this is what this affects, the Centennial Plan Fence, or, you know what I'm talking about, that, the green fence with the, you know, the one you love, Trinity. Does this remove that? Does it amend it? Does it...
The Centennial Fence?
The Centennial Fence, does that go away now with this, or it's, this is independent of that?
Mr. Vice Chairman, through you. When the, when Title Nineteen was amended to include Appendix F, the interim downtown Las Vegas development standards, and those replaced the Centennial Standards, that green fence requirement went away, and what we have is, we've had a certain number of properties that have come in with walls and fences that are basically on property lines, creating kind of a compound-type effect, and so this would introduce some regulations that would regulate those heights and create some visibility through to the properties and promote the walkability and the community feel of the neighborhood.
Thank you. And for clarification, so I may have heard it, maybe I didn't hear it, is there a certain percentage that has to be open versus a certain percentage that can be wall? I know I heard something about height, and then I think there was something about setback. It was, is it five feet from the back of curb, or five foot from the sidewalk? What is the requirement again, please?
Mr. Vice Chairman, through you. The maximum height of fences and walls between the front property line and the primary structure would not be able to exceed five feet, with the maximum height of solid fences and walls not to exceed two feet, and then it would further define a solid wall or fence as any wall or fence that is opaque for over sixty percent of its surface.
So you could have a completely open fence if you wanted, or rail, or whatever. You're just saying the maximum that can be opaque is sixty percent?
That is correct.
Okay. And the only heartburn I really have with this, this would be a citywide ordinance, correct?
This ordinance applies to the downtown Las Vegas overlay only.
Oh, I see that, okay. The issue, especially in downtown, is that most property owners downtown want to create some form of protection, especially if it's residential. So you're saying this would be across the board for all property types? You're not specifying whether it's residential or commercial, and you're probably anticipating that with the Form-Based Code coming, it won't matter, maybe, but you've got a lot of residential property owners and other people who want to have higher than a five-foot fence. What do you want to do about that?
Correct. Through you, Mr. Vice Chair. The walls, basically, the, this, this standard is pretty close to what we have for walls and fences in other areas that are governed by Title Nineteen. It does go on to provide a provision for a deviation from Title Nineteen standards through the waiver process, so they could ask for a waiver, and in cases where we have industrial properties that require screening of storage areas and that kind of thing, a waiver could be provided to accommodate that use.
Thank you. Through you, Chairman, I just feel that five feet is very low, you know, and it just seems that with this being a downtown overlay, and all the applicants being downtown affected by it, with a five-foot maximum, you're going to get an awful lot of variances, or you're going to have a lot of recommendations for denial, simply because people don't want to have a five-foot fence. And I just think that that makes a lot of non-conforming applications, and I think that's kind of silly, so...
If I might, Mr. Vice Chair, I just do want to be clear. So this is consistent with the wall provisions for the rest of the city, which is a five-foot front yard fence, and it is consistent with what we had when we did have the green fence requirement. However, we did have a number of waivers of the green fence, not the height, just that decorative green fence, which is why the green fence went away, but that height is consistent throughout, even in our, many of our, most of our special area plans, that five-foot height in the front, again, that it, it's a promotion of neighborhood walkability, neighborhood connection. It's also a general SEPTED principle of having the ability for the property owner to see out to the street, but also the police, first responders, to be able to see from the street onto the property. And so it's a pretty well-respected five-foot, with this openness is a pretty common expectation throughout the city of Las Vegas. We just, we had a little wrinkle here in downtown, where we had a couple of people who deviated from that, and we didn't have that language anymore once we got rid of the Centennial Fence.
And I have no problem with the openness, you know, the air circulation, the ability to be able to see out, the ability for first responders to see in. I agree with all of that. I think you're just going to get a lot of variances for height. I think a lot of people downtown want to have a little bit more than five feet, but, I mean, I'm open to suggestions from the commissioners.
Just for clarity, it's a waiver, right, that would come before us?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, yes, I mean, I would agree with Commissioner Roush, like, is, in the area south of Charleston, where there's a lot of projects that are either, that have happened or proposed or coming online, that I know of, I know there's other areas in downtown, security is a big concern, especially with residential, and it's a perception of people coming into this market, so I agree. I think we'll see people asking for waivers if they're rehabbing a property, and/or if it's new, they're going to find it. But if there's a mechanism to do it, I feel like everything I've heard the director say, you know, I'd be able to support it.
Commissioner Schlatman?
Yes, Vice Chair, just comment, and for everybody plus Commissioner Roush, remember my very first meeting, there was a fence that was put up that was six or, I think, seven feet in downtown, and it, our code said two feet of solid with three feet of wrought iron on the top, and the applicant, well, their representatives got up here and begged and pleaded and stated that, you know, they, she support poor old little lady who didn't know the rules, and so on and so forth, and so they're doing it pro bono for this, for her, and she had a beautiful house, but it was blocked off with a seven-foot wall going all the way around it. And so I made a motion to cut the top two feet off and cut some sections into it, and it failed, and, you know, Planning Commission said, let me, let me, let me tell you how we do it up here, because we have a lot of experience. And after that meeting, I found out this poor, poor old little lady had ten other houses where she built the same fence, and so this has always been our code. I think one problem is if you step back behind the property line, you could go twenty feet up in the air and have a solid, you know, a solid fence, so it's kind of keeping people from building solid fences by getting off the property line, but it still is something that is waivable, but doesn't allow people to just go do whatever they want behind the property line.
I've got one more comment.
For those reasons, I'll be able to support this matter.
Support it. And Commissioner, it would be nice if there was a way somehow that staff had the ability to give an administrative approval on a waiver if they see something come in that's like seven feet, and it makes good sense, and it is a waiver, and yes, they've paid the fee, that would be nice, so it's not logging up on agendas, but...
And, Mr. Chairman, that is exactly the direction we're going with the Form-Based Code. Thank you for that endorsement of that particular coding mechanism coming to a downtown district near you soon.
Fantastic. With that, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
On item number, the one right before you. Item number sixty-five, TXT seven-five-two-nine-zero, make a motion for approval.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion carries. Next is...
And, Mr. Vice Chair, that item will move forward to City Council in ordinance form for their consideration at a future date.
Okay, we'll open up item number sixty-six, which is citizen participation. Please come to the mic.
You've got to read the disclaimer.
Oh, let me see here. Item number sixty-six is citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless the subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come forward to the podium, and please give your name for the record, and the amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed to be, may be limited. Sir, I'll give you a couple minutes, please.
Is it possible to cut this thing on? I'd like to put a little bit of confirmation to my lack of insanity.
Let me get your name for the record, please.
Okay. Eddie Ray Redham.
Go ahead, Mr. Redham.
Okay. As stated, primarily, I'm grateful for all things, and relative to this homeless provision that they're doing. You know, however, I was given a title and a crown that I didn't, didn't really want. Made me king, king of the hobo's homeless and oppressed. And these are some of the documents, I'm going to be putting an affidavit together, presenting it, because it's a, it's a very, very complicated matter, and it's unbelievable. At the homeless courtyard, first of all, you guys should really have some standards, because I've got a lot of threats. People, thirsty strangers, step out the gate, where they want to gouge out your eyes and fight, and people have literally did that, and they allow those people to come right back in. So you have to lay down, not knowing if somebody is a felon or ex-felon, if they're going to, you're going to get stumped in the face and not going to know who did it, because you're going to be unconscious, and when you come to, you know, they'll be gone. So it's a lot of fear over there, and that's... So it's a lot of fear over there, and that's out of my normal environment. I'm 62, never been arrested. But the only thing more frightening is when professionals engage. In this case, work comp judges, lawyers, doctors, and this is the extent to which they've gone, even the 911 operator, let alone the police officer who I requested due to the fact that they spent over two and a half hours trying to make me sign light-duty papers in one case. But, so this 911, because she says, oh, she heard them arguing with me, and me arguing back. I'm a victim. The MRI showed that I ended up getting herniated disc with boluses and sprays in the back cervical area, the neck, degenerative tendonitis and arthritis in my right foot, so I'm begging for help. And anyway, and as a homeless person, I'm stating this because I'm being oppressed. Well, and I'll be real quick, because I'm being oppressed as a homeless person, I am pushed to the point that if it were possible, suicide would have been done. My faith in my Yahweh and Yeshua and all gives me that hope that I'm enduring so much, but who knows how much I can take? I've had 18 years of this. In the affidavit, you'll see what I'm speaking about. But anyway, real quickly, the, just to get to the, to the, one of the, some critical points of the professionals that are pressing the homeless and making me homeless, the court literally stated, and the employer, they literally used the police that I requested to demonize me. They, they stated that, oh, that I was belligerent and violent, unruly, and things like that. Never the case. And so, so they sent the officer over who made me sign this paper. And so I went in detail, asked him for extra paper, letting him know that I, told him that I, my, the pain had turned to numbness from growing the feet, whatnot. So anyway, they had him make that paper, and then lied to the work comp court, saying I refuse medical treatment, medical transport. So from the March 12th injury, to this day, I have not got medical treatment. They made sure I didn't get work comp. Never even got one penny of work comp, because my attorney, Craig Kenny, right over around the corner, didn't present any medical evidence, didn't give me one MRI, one medical appointment for treatment, nothing. Didn't contest any of the alleged false statements and other stuff. They threw away documents, you name it. So anyway, this is what pushed me into homelessness, so
Sir.
The state and state officials
Sir.
Are contributing to making people homeless. And, and just real quick, oh, I'm sorry.
Just so you know, you did just state you're homeless, correct?
Right, but here's one thing that's critical. But again, my life is in danger.
Give me, give me one second, please. I want you to understand, this commission up here is a land use board, so it's specific to things. If you own a piece of property and you're trying to open a restaurant, or build a high-rise, or build a residential, we had an application earlier today that came forward for a homeless center that will be going forward to City Council to be heard. It was approved here tonight, and there will be
May I ask you something?
Let me just finish quickly. And if you are saying you're homeless, I'd love, like, we could wrap this up, and I can step aside and talk to you. I know there's a place that you can go down the street that can give you some help, but this board is a commission, there's nothing that we can do specifically with the item, with what you're talking about right now.
Well, again, there's never going to be a topic so directly related to homeless that homelessness itself. And when there's a situation where city officials, employees, be it police, whoever, judges involved, I would think that you would be interested in hearing that. You know, but, now, I'll say this real quick, even if I say no more. I went to the FBI, because they moved me from the location, and with the intent to lie and say it was never even reported there. That constitutes kidnapping. So this is a very serious matter. I have not been able to go to anybody
Listen, I'm going to have to wrap this up. Do you know where the Catholic Charities are down on Main Street?
Catholic Charities? Look, that's what I'm telling you.
I'm just asking if you, if you know where it's at.
Yeah, yeah, but that's what I'm telling you. It's your officials, your police officers, you have acted inappropriately, who caused me to have to be at Catholic Charity, as well as sleeping on the mats at the courtyard.
Okay, but listen, I'm trying to offer
But again, I understand that you don't want to hear. I understand that you guys have such a narrow scope, that if a person was raped, they couldn't come to you and say
Okay, sir, we're done. We're done.
Sir, excuse me. Are you a vet?
So you guys have a narrow, narrow scope.
Sir, have you been in the armed services? Are you a vet?
Yes, when I went to the Attorney General
No, are you a vet? Did you serve in the Navy?
I'm not a vet.
Thank you, that's all I have.
The Attorney General offered me, offered me welfare, rather than work comp resolution. And his, his officers literally tried to create a situation, or saying, oh, don't put your hands out to me, sir, and putting his hand on his gun, and so, oh, so your hands on your gun, you're going to shoot me, huh?
Yeah.
So, you had the Attorney General. The only people I saw
Right.
Was the people with the guns. So, but anyway, in the affidavit, you'll see what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
And I'll go in detail.
Okay.
Now, just one thing real quick, as a homeless person
Sir.
See these patents right here?
Sir, I got you, man.
I see it.
We'll talk you off to the side. I'm going to close the public comment. I see no other?
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
But anyway, like, these are patents on airbag tech